All right, I think we're ready. Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Conference of November 10th, 2020. We have one item on tonight's agenda. I would like to recognize Dr. Brassler for an update on the COVID-19 coronavirus and thank Dr. Kate Cook with Norman Regional for joining us as well. Dr. Brassler, it's all yours.
All right, thank you Mayor Clark. I'm going to show you where we're at in the state at the moment, and I'll show you some specific data for both Norman and Cleveland County. So here's where we're at as of today, we had a few, a little bit reduction in the number of cases today, 1,700 new cases today, which is obviously far higher than we had expected a long time ago. We had 1,451 deaths today, some of you may know the significance of that number because the Institute of Health Metrics and Evaluation had originally predicted that we would hit 1,450 on Thanksgiving. We're obviously far ahead of that now, and there are 20,632 active cases of COVID-19 in the state, and by the way, I'm happy to share these slides. They go out of date in a day or two anyway, so I'm happy to share them. I'm going to skip the three-day rolling averages, all screwed up because of the weekend lack of data for a day. But on the seven-day rolling average, which is the number I watch most closely, we're currently at 1,947 cases on average daily in Oklahoma. So clearly a dramatic increase, the highest it's ever been in the state during the pandemic, and you can see the trend line does not look good based on the data that's available. Here's Cleveland County, 96, 73 cases as of today. These are the three at the top, Tulsa, Oklahoma, and Cleveland County are the most populous counties in Oklahoma, therefore they have the most cases routinely. Cleveland County's numbers were down quite a bit today, 75 today compared to what they had been. I'm going to show you though, something that I think is very important to understand. Now, all of these numbers are up, every single county in the state is seeing an increase in the number of cases, but this is the cases per 100,000 population daily that have occurred over the past week. So Oklahoma's at 56.8 daily new cases per 100,000 population. But look at many of the rural counties in the state, most of these are rural counties that don't have mask mandates in place where we've seen substantial growth in the number of cases. So, so if you go back here to a Foskey County, which is a very small county, that 40 cases today that were reported, and that puts them, they've been very, very high for several weeks, they were one of the highest counties in the state in terms of the number of new cases. Oklahoma County's at 49.8, Cleveland County 41.2 cases per 100,000 populations per day right now. So you get a sense here's Payne County where OSU sits there at 54. The whole state's red now on the Harvard map with just a very few exceptions. Here's Cleveland County data, again, the seven-day rolling average is as high as it's been, it's at 121 new cases per day. But again, that's largely driven by that single peak of 326 cases because it hadn't come down or even flattened out. So the past few days, the big uptick in cases have raised that seven-day rolling average for Cleveland County. Here's the city of Norman, 138 cases yesterday, only 31 new cases reported today. So the seven-day rolling average is right at about, I think, 68 cases today. And here are the three zip codes that I monitored closely that are around the University of Oklahoma campus at about 64 new cases a day on average. So a good chunk of the cases that are happening in Norman do happen in these three zip codes, just highlight that. This was really disturbing data, this is yesterday's data, the state reported that 26,000 tests were run in the state. But this is the number that scared me very much, 19.2% of the tests that were run were positive, which is the highest percentage I've ever seen in Oklahoma. One of the things I highlighted on the news this morning that on May 25th, we were at 1.8% or about 2%, now we're approaching 20%. So as Ken Ogle noted this morning, we've had almost a tenfold increase in the positivity rate now of tests that are being done last week as a whole, for the entire week, 87,000 tests were done in the state, we've been down for the past two weeks, 12.1% of the tests were positive when you rolled up the entire week last week. I'm going to skip Goddard and Kate, but this is testing that's happened at the university. We have seen an uptick in positive rates on the university campus, and we do have more students in isolation now, and then as Kate can attest, hospitals are full. 1,102 patients in the hospital yesterday with COVID-19, which again is the highest it had ever been in the state. Most of those are confirmed cases, there were only about 60 persons under investigation in the hospital in the state. And when you look at just confirmed cases, there were 1,038 in the hospital with 330 people in the intensive care unit. And that's what drives deaths, the people that end up in ICUs are people who are sick, chronic comorbid condition or older patients. So that's where we're at in the state right now. Kate may have other thoughts, but, but that's what's happened in the state. Again, I think part of these big peaks in cases happened because there was a backlog in cases that the health department did acknowledge. I think there were something like 500 really old tests that they reported on Saturday as a part of that 4,700 or 4,500 number of cases. But still, we've seen a big uptick in the positive cases in the state. I'm happy to answer any questions or review, and again, I'm happy Mayor Clark to send these slides out so anybody can look at them.
I think that would be helpful, I appreciate you making time for us today. I just want to thank you, Dr. Brassler and Dr. Cook, you both have been very accessible and very transparent in all of the information, and a lot of it is very hard to digest. You know, we shut down the city with a fraction of what we're seeing, and now it's continuing to rise and no end in sight. The governor today asked everyone to wear masks despite the science showing as you confirm that cities with mask mandates have lower transmission rates. And so on the agenda later today, excuse me, later tonight, we will be discussing renewing or, I guess, extending our current mask mandate, which was set to expire on November 30th. And I invited both Dr. Brassler and Dr. Cook to join us to make sure all of you had an opportunity to have your questions answered before we have that debate later on tonight, so I will turn it over to any of you. Madam Clerk, I'll let you call on people if you would. Oh, Dr. Cook?
Dr. Cook, you're still muted.
We can't hear you, you're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
No, still not. We had this happen last week.
One thing while Kate's working on her audio, I thought I might just show this, this is a report that the state health department produces looking at the impact of communities that have masks versus those communities that do not have mask mandates. The percentage change, so everybody in the state's going up, just recognize that, there's broad community spread of the virus. But communities that had mask mandates had a dramatically lower increase in the number of cases compared to those communities that did not. When you look at two months' worth of data, it was about a 25% reduction in the risk of increase in cases compared to when you looked at that time period, 8-1 to 11-1, a very dramatic reduction. So we're seeing definite community spread, but I think you can see, it's not the easiest graphic to read, but you can see that there's a difference in the curves, this comes straight from the health department in their weekly epidemiologic report.
And Dr. Brassler, what is the University of Oklahoma's plan? I think one of the great successes with Cleveland County, specifically Norman being the home to the university, is that we've worked together with our actions to try and curb the transmission and spread of COVID-19. So can you tell us a little bit what the University of Oklahoma is planning to do in the spring? Because if you haven't heard, they are sending students home at Thanksgiving, and then we'll finish the semester online, and I will make a plug right now to any OU students watching. Before you go home, please get one of the free tests available. We don't want to send any virus home to your loved ones as we are going home to celebrate the holidays.
Yeah, so thank you Mayor. So at Thanksgiving, we are offering free tests in that week before Thanksgiving. We have three different sites that we've offered to the students, we're actually having a competition with OSU for both universities to see that the COVID-19 battle is one that we're not competing on, so we're trying to get as many students from both universities to get tests before they go home. So that, that's an important part of it. Second, I, one thing I will just correct just slightly is that, that there are quite a few students that are going home and will be staying home until the start of the spring semester. There are some students where their parents don't want them to come home and stay home and are sending them back to the dormitories. So we'll still have students on campus, though all of their courses will be online. There is no plan to change the mask mandate that I put into place when I became the Chief COVID Officer, that will continue in all university facilities. We have mandated physical distancing in all of our classrooms, we haven't documented any transmission of the virus in our classrooms. So we're strongly encouraging all the students to get tested before they go home. We are working with the state to hopefully get the binex card so we can do rapid antigen testing on a large group of students. So anybody that comes back to Norman, we're hoping to test them in that week when they come back because we do have concerns, we're sending students home to rural communities and others that don't have mask mandates and have much greater current transmission of the virus than we see in our metropolitan county, so we're really going to focus on that. And then the, the teaching in the spring semester, I think there's going to be more options for the students about online versus in-person teaching. Although I tell you, the big controversy, not controversy, but, but one of the common conversations we're having at the university right now is we actually believe most of our students, faculty and staff are safer on campus than when they go home. Because when we look at where people are reporting their infections, what the activities that they've been doing, they're the ones that you know about, their off-campus activities, roommates, housemates are a common source of infection. Restaurants, you know, going out, doing events, we had some Halloween parties in Norman that we had asked them not to do and things like that, but that's where people get infected.
And Dr. Cook did post in the chat, and I'll just read that for everyone to hear. She says that's what she was going to share, what Dr. Braxler shared, around 88% increase in communities without mandates and around 21% increase in those with mandates. I mean, I would ask you, Dr. Braxler, if you wouldn't mind emailing those slides to me. I'd be happy to get those out to council.
I'll be happy to do that, Brenda. I'm sure I can find your email address.
I will send it to you.
Okay.
Councilmember Holman.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions, I appreciate you taking the time, taking the time to be here with us to help us understand this better. So one of the, I guess, big questions or talking points I see a lot from some officials and just the general public is, you know, that more testing is why we see more, a higher positive rate. Would you mind, someone mind talking about that in a little detail about why that's not necessarily the case? You know, more tests doesn't mean that that's why the numbers are rising, or if it is, then why is that?
Yeah, so that question comes up frequently. I see I'm signed in as Gary Raskin, I wonder how that happened. I'm, I'm, I'm posing as the dean today. So here's the actual testing that's occurred over the past several weeks in Oklahoma, and what you see, we peaked in our testing around October 10th. But the, what's, what's driving the higher case rate right now is the fact that we have more people testing positive, you can see kind of the trend line that the number of tests that are positive is going up, which reflects community spread of the virus. So one of the questions that Kate asked me this morning was, is, you know, are we doing enough tests? And most experts say that if your positivity rate is high, you're probably not testing enough people because that means you're missing a lot of people who already have positive tests. So again, yesterday alone, now this is just one day's worth of, well, it's the weekend's data. 19.2%, if I drew the line, it would come way up here to almost 20% positive test as of yesterday. And then last week, and see for the past two weeks, the number of tests have actually gone down, but the percent of tests positive has gone up, so.
So just to be clear, the, the more testing does not equate to the fact that the test, the positive testing rate has continued to rise?
Yeah, in fact, I called one of our Oklahoma City County Health Department website, uh, testing sites that we convene with, that we have partnered with. And indeed, I think just the opposite is happening, more people are requesting tests because we have more symptomatic people. So they had a real backlog of people requesting appointments to get tested.
Appreciate the clarification on that. I think we probably all, all of us on council have had questions like that, and certainly have seen those questions. Another one, and it may be too early to really tell, but it just doesn't matter, a federal policy from your standpoint, if, you know, based on whatever administration might be in charge, do you know anything currently about what might be changing from a federal standpoint in the next few months or?
Oh my goodness, I hate to try to predict politics.
Sure.
You know, so.
More so the, 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 the folks that seemingly President-elect Biden has put together, if you might know any of them or their backgrounds and what you think talks about like national mask mandates, any type of that stuff, if, from your perspective, if you heard that in just the last week or so, I would guess.
Yeah, so I, I think he's put together a very reasonable task force of people who are experts in the field. Vivek Murphy had new briefly as the Surgeon General, a very, very strong individual. The, the one guy I was really glad to see is Mike Osterholm from the University of Minnesota, he's a frequent commentator for multiple different networks nationally. He runs the Center for Infectious Disease Research at the University of Minnesota, very, very good. Also, the, the largely the feeling is, is that Anthony Fauci will be on the president, whichever president's task force. He wasn't named Biden's initially because he's still on President Trump's, but, but everybody has enormous respect for Anthony Fauci. So what I think will happen, I mean, is if, if there's a change in administration, my sense is that there'll be a little bit more of a science focus. And, you know, try to help dispel some of the myths that are constantly out there, conspiracy theories and everything else, you know. If you believed all the conspiracy theories, then the pandemic would have gone away on, on November 4th, but it didn't. So, so I, I don't know how to, you know, I think there'll be additional, you know, one of the things I, we were talking with the secretary, the commissioner's office today about was CARES Act funding. I think it's likely, more likely that there'll be additional money put into public health for some of those resources like testing, isolation, contact tracing and things like that. And, you know, Biden has said that he would have a mask mandate nationally. I think a lot of us feel like the one thing we need is some consistent policy across the board for a while to get this under control. And then we can talk about the duration and other things, and hopefully by then we'll have a vaccine that's in wide enough distribution that we can actually start to see case counts go down. Distribution of a vaccine is going to be very, very important.
Appreciate that, I've definitely already been hearing questions from folks, kind of unsure about what national, you know, federal guidelines we might see that could help, help state and local governments, I appreciate the, appreciate that. And then the other question I have is really more, so questions from folks about once they have it, once they've had it before, do they still need to keep getting tested for it? And if they've had it before, how long can they continue spreading it to other people or can't? Cause I've seen definitely a lot of different confusion, some folks thinking that once they've had it, they don't need to wear masks anymore, that type of stuff.
Yeah, so it's a really good question, one that's been raised even with our governor since he's had it and hasn't been a super supporter of masks. So CDC guidance here is pretty clear, let's say somebody is healthy and gets COVID-19 and actually becomes symptomatic. You are put into isolation for 10 days from the date of the onset of your symptoms. And studies have shown, there were many studies done early in the pandemic that showed that even though you can keep testing them, and they may test positive for several weeks to even, we've seen people six weeks or so test positive, you can't grow the virus, so they don't shed the virus. So the CDC guidance is really clear, if you test positive, you're in, you're in isolation for 10 days from the date of your first positive test or when you had the onset of your symptoms. The only caveat there is if you happen to be a person that has an immunosuppressive condition or you got really sick, you were hospitalized, those people we isolate for 20 days. Just to be on the safe side, but largely 10 days. How long does immunity last? Nobody knows, even with these new vaccines, recognize that even though Pfizer announced the, you know, the exciting news that their vaccine was 90% effective. Remember that we won't have any more than three or four months of clinical trial data on the vaccines to see how long they protect you, so we don't know that. So the current recommendations from CDC are, we don't retest people in the first 90 days after the infection. But after 90 days, three months, beyond three months, then if somebody comes up with symptoms or exposures, again, we may test them again at that point. We don't know, there are people who have reported reinfection, there are a few well-documented genetic testing, re-infections in people who have had it. So right now, you know, for our patients, our students, we don't retest in the first 90 days.
Okay, but to be clear further, I appreciate that, that you can, you, it's possible that you could get it again after 90 days, you could get it and spread it. Okay, thank you so much.
We, we don't know how long immunity lasts, that's why I think you're actually starting to see the governor wears masks a bit more. Because, you know, he's getting beyond, I don't, can't remember the exact date that he tested positive, but once we get beyond 90 days, what happens if you measure blood antibodies, they tend to drop off fairly quickly.
Well, I appreciate the comments about not knowing how long immunity or a vaccine would actually work. And maybe it works for a year, or maybe it works, or it's something we have to do all the time or every year, like the flu, that, you know, that type of thing. So I really appreciate that, I don't think a lot of, I don't think that's really been mentioned a lot in the kind of excitement about there being something folks haven't really thought about, well, it may not be one that you take and it, that's it forever, you're good. So I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Yeah, we don't know, and you know, an interesting point is that with the new vaccines, particularly RNA vaccines that inject a small piece of genetic material, the virus into you, those particular vaccines stimulate what's called T-cell immunity, which is not dependent on antibodies. So even if your antibodies to the vaccine drop off in three months, you may have more prolonged immunity. We just don't know yet because none of those vaccines have been in trials long enough to know how long the immunity might last.
And one, just one more real quick, how long does a vaccine normally take, just to be clear in your professional experience to formulate tests for it would normally, under not pressing circumstances, would something like that take to go through the whole process?
Oh, well, many vaccines take years before they're released on the market. The, the big difference with this one is the FDA agreed to do emergency use authorization if the vaccine manufacturers had at least 30,000 patients in their clinical trials. And then the other thing, the one thing I, I did like that the Trump administration did was the Operation Warp Speed where they gave money to the companies to go ahead and start manufacturing their test vaccines even while they were still doing the test. So that, once they get emergency use authorization, they'll have doses to actually start shipping pretty quickly.
Thank you.
Councilmember Petron. Thank you for joining us, Dr. Brassler. You've been a wealth of information all along, and I've enjoyed, well, I don't know if enjoyed is the right word, but I've appreciated the ability to follow you online as well. You mentioned the hospital census right across the state, can you tell us what that looks like for Norman Regional, for our local health, health system?
Yeah, I don't know if Kate can talk yet, if you have audio yet, Kate or not. I know Norman was very full. Can't hear you.
No, maybe you can hold up a sign.
Yeah, so, so there were certain hospitals that had really, were really at limited capacity, Norman was one of them, UConn was one of them. Stillwater was very limited capacity, and then yesterday, when I, I was in a meeting last night, I think Kate may have been there, where Tulsa was reported to have about 3% occupant availability of ICU beds, and somewhere around 9:00 PM last night, supposedly they reported that all of their beds in Tulsa ICU beds were full. So of course, remember the turnover of these patients is relatively rapid. If a patient doesn't require mechanical ventilation, most of them are in the hospital for much shorter periods of time. And then whether we like it or not, with 300 people in the hospital and an ICU, there's a fairly high mortality rate, and so some beds are opened up just because people die in the hospital. And that's sad, but that's true.
Yeah, so can we expect, as a follow-up to that, can we expect that, maybe just a head nod, Dr. Cook, but that Norman Regional would give the same type of announcement to the local people here if we reach capacity that they will make a press release or something to let the public know? Maybe she doesn't know, okay.
Yeah, well, and the other thing I will say though, as my, as the CEO of OU Medicine tells me all the time, it changes hour to hour, literally. Because we try to get patients out as quickly as we possibly can, there are deaths, whether we like it or not, I mean, we had, I think earlier this morning, 27 people on ventilators. That's just the reality that, that mortality rate, when you get that sick is relatively high, so it can change hour to hour. The other thing is, you know, all hospitals are dealing with patients that are admitted with heart attacks, strokes, trauma, broken, you know, things like that, that put them, may put them in ICU transiently. So ICU bed capacity can fluctuate in a hospital, you know, on an hour-by-hour basis, so. So I haven't seen too many hospitals that are putting out pressure releases that, hey, we're full. But the big challenge has been, you know, if a patient came into Norman Regional and they didn't have any ICU beds, then it's left to them to figure out where they can send the patient, which has been, you know, daunting task of calling five or six different hospitals potentially to see who happens to have a bed available. And the governor did talk about using the, and I'll get it screwed up, that emergency management resource that they have to help with that explicit process of knowing where beds were and helping to coordinate ambulances and others to do those transfers to facilities that did have beds available.
Okay. And I'm gonna have a question down the way about the tier system with the hospital association, but I think that that's maybe what you're referring to. Do you know if the state or the governor has given a threshold of the amount of patients that, you know, hospital capacity or a statewide mandate would be considered?
So I, no, he is not, I mean, he's been very, you know, heels dug in that he's not going to do a state mandate for a mask. He has the authority under tier three to issue executive orders to close down elective procedures. That's very disturbing, I think, both to patients and to many hospitals because what some people may define as elective, you may not think is elective. If you're, you had bad hip pain and needed to have a hip replacement or things like that, so. So, but he does have that authority potentially under this to declare a health emergency again, and he could shut down elective procedures, elective operations, which would potentially open up beds in the hospital and free up some staff. which would potentially open up beds in the hospital and free up some staff.
Okay. I think that I agree with Councilmember Holman that it's incumbent upon us to speak to or allow you to speak to some of the disinformation that is floating around. It's quite prevalent. And so along those lines, this week, the, and I believe it would be that Health Commissioner made a statement that has been construed that mask ordinances have not been an effective way to bring down the cases. And by the percentages that Dr. Cook and yourself have shown just in this presentation tonight, it would seem to be that those percentages speak for themselves and that these mask ordinances do work. I wondered if you would like to maybe clear the air on. I think in this particular case, it's misinformation because I think they misunderstood what he was saying. But go ahead and give your personal opinion as the professional that you are, so your professional opinion.
So I did listen to his press conference yesterday. He didn't say that masks are effective. In fact, it is his own department, the State Health Department, that's publishing data that shows that they are effective. What he said was, he was concerned that issuing a mandate would cause some backlash and that some people might explicitly not wear a mask because they were being told they had to versus just encouraging them to. And that's, that was his opinion yesterday. I don't necessarily agree with, and I think I said on the news this morning, I, I heard a governor in another state that issued a mask mandate. It was quite upfront with it. He basically said, I know not everybody's going to do it, but you know what? Most people follow rules, most people. And if you explain why, the importance of it, most people will do it. So I still think we need to have a mask mandate, mainly because I think there are so many exceptions around the state in places you can not be wearing a mask, but you can definitely get infected. Whether we like it or not, places of worship, whether it's a funeral, a wedding or a church service, you can get infected there if you're not wearing a mask. Any place you go that you're indoors without a mask, restaurants, bars, things like that. And that's why I, I think we're to the point where, you know, if you look at the White House Task Force reports, they explicitly recommended that restaurants be cut to 50% capacity. I don't want to see restaurants closed down, but I frankly, I eat at restaurants all the time, but I just don't sit inside anymore. I go do carryout. I want, encourage people to do that. But, but if you get people close together indoors without a mask and you have to take your mask off to be in a bar or in a restaurant, those are places where infections occur.
Thank you. So can you tell us what professions have been statistically most at risk of contracting? Not necessarily just any case of COVID, but what are we seeing statistics wise of professions that are suffering from disease?
Well, undoubtedly, there are a lot of healthcare workers in Oklahoma have been infected. But as I pointed out last night, Kate was on the call, I think, and we were talking about how many healthcare workers in Oklahoma have been infected. It's quite a few, it's something like 7,000. But we can't tell oftentimes, at least in our system, we do our own case investigation every time somebody gets infected. And the vast majority in our system are getting infected at home, not at work. Because we, we have absolutely in this campus mandated strict policies of masks, physical distancing, closed down break rooms. You know, we make all families and patients wear masks. And so we're not seeing patient to healthcare worker transmission in our setting. The healthcare workers that get infected are going home and getting it from a roommate, a housemate, household contact, or some event that they do outside.
Recently, there was a report that police officers, the number one cause of death for police officers in 2020 was COVID. Have you seen that statistic as well?
No, I did not see that. I knew we had an Oklahoma Highway Patrolman that died this year of COVID-19. I'd not heard that about police officers in general. But again, when you look at the prioritization plan for the vaccine, first responders, which would include people that are going to be in the community, in the face of patients, like policemen, paramedics, firefighters, and then the healthcare workers, ER docs, nurses, ICU docs, and are going to be the priority for the vaccine.
And what about teachers? Have we seen case rates go up?
So there have been documented teachers who've been infected. Again, it's a little bit difficult to know whether they got their infection from the classroom or from some activity outside of the classroom. That's very difficult sometimes to track down, particularly if they've done anything outside. But, you know, I don't know what the exact percentage of teachers are, but some have definitely been infected. And of course, as you know, in Oklahoma, the vast majority of hospitalizations incur in people who are 50 years of age and older. That's the high risk group.
If you can opine with your professional experience, what you're seeing with this massive case increase, we know that hospitalization rates tend to be three weeks or so behind case positivity. So seeing that arc of cases go up, three weeks later, we can expect hospital admissions to go up. If I understand prior reporting correctly. And this is going into the hospital association's tier system. If we can expect three weeks from now that we're going to have ample capacity to treat what we're seeing in prevalence of cases today.
I'm actually worried about next week because when you look at people who test positive, the typical onset of symptoms is somewhere around five days after they have, get infected and three or four days after they have the onset of symptoms. So the fact that we had, you know, over the three days, 6,700 or so people that tested positive in Oklahoma, at least based on the Health Information Exchange data, we see that around 10% of the people who are case positive end up in a hospital. So we could see a big surge in hospitalizations here within a week. I, I actually, I'm, I'm not worried about three weeks, I'm more worried about a week from now.
And then I guess my final question has to do with, you spoke to, with the exception of a couple of counties, that the entire state is in the red. And understanding that the State Department of Education sees the color coding system and being in the red to do with PPE availability and some other factors, hospitalization, I believe is one. Would it be, can we anticipate that the state will be updating their color coding system for public schools to be more intuitive based on the color coding system that you're presenting to us today?
Yeah, so, so let me be explicitly clear, the, the map that I showed is the one that I like. It comes from Harvard University and Brown University. And it's very objective and it has explicit cutoffs for case counts. And so anytime you get above 25 cases per 100,000 population, you're in the red. And that's why most of Oklahoma is in the red now. The county map that the State Health Department produces, in my opinions, is of no value largely. Because the only way you get into red is if you have one of those triggers, like all your hospital beds are full or you're on a personal protective equipment, things like that. So it's just, the whole state is just orange or, or the darker yellow, whatever color they call it on the State Health Department. So I just don't use it. I will state that the Oklahoma State Board of Education actually creates their own map. And they do update it weekly every Friday. So it had more red on it this week and I suspect that this coming Friday, it's going to have a whole lot more red on it.
Well, again, I just really appreciate you and I know that this has been, I can't even imagine what you've gone through with this, the amount of stress. But just know that we truly appreciate you and Dr. Cook and all of you all that are working so hard to protect us.
Thank you.
Speaking of Dr. Cook, I will read one of her comments because I can't see her talk. She says, I'll also add for reference on our 41 cases out of 100,000 at the Oklahoma State Department of Education red zone, where Norman Public Schools has said they would convert to all virtual learning is 50 cases out of 100,000. I certainly want the community to be safe enough for our kids to be in school. I don't know if, for those of you that have children in Norman Public Schools, I get at least one notification a day that there are positive cases, which is really disconcerting. And then Councilman Reforman shared that from yesterday. Percentage by hospital, is this available ICU beds, Councilman Reforman?
Yes, this is from OU Medicine, Inc.
Okay, and the percentage of ICU beds available at OU Health was 17%. Note, Dr. Cook is shaking her head now.
I don't think we've had 17% availability. The Oklahoma City metro as of yesterday had 5% capacity in ICU beds. So they were a little better than Tulsa County. But again, it changes frequently. And I think many of you know, we just opened our new bed tower and we converted one floor to a COVID bed already. COVID floor, so because each room in our new bed tower can be an ICU bed. So we've expanded capacity. We took one of our old medical ICUs and converted it into a COVID unit. But, but the hospitals are stressed, they're, they're, they're stressed.
And Dr. Cook reports that she thinks that may be the percentage of COVID patient out of entire patient population in that report. We do have, Councilmember Reverend does have some questions. I would just state, I think we have Dr. Bratsler with us till six and then he has to step off, so.
I'm teaching class, I'm actually teaching class tonight, so it starts at six o'clock, just downstairs from my office, so.
Okay, Kate. Councilmember Reverend.
Dr. Bratsler, I just have a couple of questions for you. One is, I don't, I don't, I just wanted to make sure that this is something that we kind of got out there again, because I don't think we've talked about it in a few months. But can you define recovered? When we talk about recovery, you know, are we talking not dead? Or recovered and no longer feeling any symptoms effects of COVID?
No, it's a great question, Kate. The, the current definition is that you're 14 days beyond the diagnosis, beyond the positive test. You're not in a hospital and you're not dead. But remember, there's a substantial proportion of people who have ongoing symptoms for prolonged periods of time that don't meet any one of those. So the recovered number to me is not terribly useful. I do watch the active because those are the people in the community that may still be infectious. But the recovered number, I don't pay attention to at all.
Well, and I'm, I'm glad to hear you say that because that's one of the things I wanted to highlight is when people, you know, reference that, you know, 98% of people recover or 99% of people recover. The data they are citing is pretty much just not dead after 14 days, which doesn't really give a good sense of what people in this community are struggling with right now, two, three, four, five months after they quote recovered.
Absolutely, chronic fatigue, shortness of breath. I, I take care of a couple of patients that had really difficulty, that were very active before, have had really difficulty building their aerobic capacity back and doing things just because of the lung involvement that they had. So, so yeah, you're right, it's, it's 14 days, not in a hospital and not dead.
Thank you. And then we, we touched a little bit on, you know, vaccines and when we might, when we might see one. But using kind of the, the most recent news as possibly the most likely vaccine to arrive in this state first, the Pfizer vaccine. Can we talk about the logistics of how that would roll out? I mean, you talked about prioritizing healthcare workers and the elderly and the ones who are extremely vulnerable. But even then, you know, that phase two or phase three or phase four of rollout, at least this particular vaccine needs to be cold stored, it's a double dose. And with the pretty significant rate of maybe vaccine hesitancy is the right term for it. What are we looking at for the im, potential impact of a vaccine in the state of Oklahoma? If we do have some of these very significant hurdles to even get it in the arms of Oklahomans?
Yeah, it's a great question. So you're absolutely right. The vaccines that we're talking about have to be stored very, very cold. And so I'm not sure they'll be available in a lot of individual doctors' offices, but because they don't have the code storage capability to keep the vaccines that cold that they have to. And once they're thawed, they have to be used quickly. Or otherwise they go bad. And, and as you point out, it's typically two doses. One of them is three weeks apart, the other one's four weeks apart, but it's two doses of the vaccine. I, I think, here's the way I feel. I think it's going to be really important to get our first responders and our frontline people vaccinated. And then I, I really hope we do a very aggressive effort to get our high risk patients vaccinated. Because, you know, the reality is, although I'm not saying it never happens, I'm not a pediatrician like Kate, but most young people that get this infection actually do recover or have minimal illness. That's the good news. This, that's the one area where this virus seems to be quite different from influenza. Influenza kills the young and the elderly. This vaccine kills the elderly and those with chronic illness. So, so I think that we can substantially reduce the risk of death if we can get the vaccine into those high risk populations. And then I think there'll be enough of us that take the vaccine when it's readily available to the general public that we can start to see, see reduction in the transmission of the virus because it'll be harder and harder for the virus to find an unvaccinated person or somebody that hasn't already got immunity. If you assume that 10% or 15% of the Oklahoma population has already been exposed to the virus in some way, they may have longer term immunity than we know about. We just don't know how long it lasts.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And kind of in the meantime, since we are looking at many months away from a vaccine having any measurable impact on the state. You know, I know, and I'll kind of say this in advance for anyone who's watching or listening and goes, is that I know that what you're, what I'm hoping you will give me is the pure unvarnished public health opinion. And it is going to be our job as elected officials to figure out, you know, how to, how to split that and kind of find something that is palatable. In addition, is there anything that we can do? You know, we're having, we have an extension of our mask mandate on the agenda for tonight. Is there anything we can do either to that mask mandate to make it more effective? Or anything else we should be considering doing to help curb the spread in the meantime, especially as we continue to approach these colder months, multiple holidays all in a row? Really kind of the, the perfect disaster in terms of a virus's spread. So is there anything we can do to tweak the mask mandate? And/or anything else we need to be considering doing for the next few months to bridge that gap?
Yeah, so it's a great question. I've talked to so many city councils, I don't remember all of the specifics of your mask mandate in terms of age groups and, and exceptions. Some of the exceptions I've seen in a number of cities, I've not agreed with at all, like gyms and things like that. We make all the OU athletic team wear a mask when they're working out. You know, they can do it, you can do it. So I'm trying to avoid some of those exceptions. Again, I think when you look at contact tracing, as good as it's been, the places where people get the infection are particularly in larger group settings. And so I think that includes obviously your bars, restaurants, your places of worship, places like that where people may be in there without a mask. Those, those are some of the principal areas. I, I think those are the main things. I mean, if you look at the White House Task Force and some of you may have seen the Facebook post I put, put out over the weekend. I just went, walked through the White House Task Force reports. They've actually laid out most of the things we need to be doing in Oklahoma to stem the tide. We just haven't implemented them. And I understand the financial implications, I completely get it. I, I understand why a restaurant owner or others don't want to see additional restrictions. But I think we just keep dragging this out, more people are going to die. And we're going to be in this perpetual period of, of, of partial lockdown or partial restrictions until we have a vaccine that's probably available if we, if we don't tighten things up a bit. So I, and I'll tell you, my experience was, I don't know if some of you, I watched the, I was watching television and there's this bar in downtown Oklahoma City that's always this nightclub that's advertising broadly on television, people coming and they show people dancing and close together, drinking and no mask. Well, that was some of the watch parties after the, after the, the election. But the, you know, somebody that knew better should, sent me a video of one of the piano bars in downtown Oklahoma City, just packed with people, no mask, singing Sweet Caroline as loud as they could. I just, you know, they're just behaviors that, that are not appropriate. And I don't know how to change behaviors without, you know, forcing some of it. So your job's the hard part here. So your job's the hard part here, and that's deciding what you can do, recognizing you represent the best interest of the city of Norman and the business owners. I completely understand and and understand the challenges you have. But people are dying because of this. And, you know, it just hasn't slowed down yet.
Thank you. That was on my question.
Councilmember Hall.
Okay, thank you. I know, well, we're short on time as far as you're concerned, Dr. Bratzler, but I also want to extend my thanks for continuing to bring us the most up-to-date information. And I appreciate the questions of all my colleagues so far. I've really had a lot of my questions answered. But I do want to pursue one of the statements that you made and and just emphasize one of the comments that Dr. Cook just made, because I've actually received multiple inquiries from constituents about this particular issue of going into the winter season. And we've been blessed with really mild weather in Oklahoma so that we've been able to be, take advantage of a lot of activities that everybody loves because you can be outside. But and it concerns indoor sports and what you were just saying. I've had, just in the last couple of days, parents who were concerned about whether or not they should allow their children to participate in indoor leagues of, you know, all kinds of different sports. Because of their concern that there just is no, no masking going on at all. And I would like you to just talk a little bit about the policies that you have in place with your student athletes at OU and, you know, expand a little bit about your comment. If you all can do it, we can do it too.
Yeah, absolutely. So for the OU athletes, again, I'll give Scott Anderson, the whole team, a lot of credit there. We made the decision to require masks for all workouts for all of our teams with one exception, and that was gymnastics, where the risk of a mask coming up over their face so that they couldn't grab a parallel bar. It could could result in real injury. So with that exception, they're all required to wear a mask, the basketball team, football team, and everybody during the workouts. And we just made that an absolute rule. The other point I'll make about indoor sports is I had a conversation not long ago with the Oklahoma Secondary Schools Activities Association, which oversees many high school and and secondary school sports in the state. And they want, they want a mandate for indoor sports for the fans to all be in masks. Think about it. They they were telling me that there are cheer events that might bring 3,000 parents and grandparents together to watch cheer competitions. I was shocked by the numbers that they were talking about packed into a high school gymnasium. So I think high school gymnasiums need to limit capacity. I know Lloyd Noble will have limited seating, just like we did in the football stadium. I've already been working with the Thunder. The Thunder will have limited indoor seating at the arena. They're not going to fill the place up. And masks are going to be a requirement to be indoors in those settings. I just think that's incredibly important, because think about it. It's one thing outdoors at a football stadium, or at least you got the wind and you're outdoors. To be inside of a stadium in a high school gym, a bunch of fans, parents, grandparents, high-risk people yelling, cheering their kids on, I think it's just a disaster waiting to happen. So I've contacted Joy Hofmeister and the Commissioner of Health. Joy Hofmeister is very on board. The commissioner didn't respond to me. That seems to be common for me lately.
And I just am assuming that it would would, that we would assume that coaches have no reason not to be masked, really.
NFL fines the coaches if they're on the sideline without a mask on. I mean, if, you know, why should we assume they're any different than than our high school? You know, we're not immune to it. And and again, it's part of the reason I showed the slide on the rural spread of the disease. Man, it's really spreading through rural communities right now.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any other hands raised right now. And I know Dr. Bratzler has to leave us, so.
He does. Dr. Bratzler, I want to thank you again for your time and share one more concern that I have. And anything you could do to help would be appreciated. As I'm sure you know, the emergency order with the Open Meetings Act that allows us to meet virtually all governing bodies, not just the city of Norman, expires on November 15th as our numbers continue to skyrocket. Yet I can't seem to get our state legislature or our governor to care. So it's if they're comfortable wiping out every local government in Oklahoma, I have real concerns with that. And in the press conference today, it was shared that he believes in local control, which don't get me started on preemption in the state of Oklahoma. But it would be nice to have some support. So if there's anything that you and your colleagues could do to stress the importance of protecting the day-to-day operations of a city, I would deeply appreciate that.
All right, I thank you for that. I I will remember that and bring that up. And I did hear his comments today, and he didn't seem compelled to call a special session or anything else to get, you know, to change that. But.
He did not. He claimed one month was not a lot to wait, but the calendar that I use shows we have about three months. So that's kind of a big deal right now, and we need to take care of our staff and our families. So anything you can do to help would be appreciated, especially when you have the mayor of Miami, who Facebook Live from his hospital bed on oxygen for the past few days. I think he's home now. I wish him and his wife a speedy recovery, but this is real. So any support would be very much appreciated, and thank you for your time tonight.
Yeah, my pleasure. I appreciate everything you guys are doing, because it's been a great partnership for the university, working with the city of Norman. And I told, I told the university in our leadership meeting this week that we will be, that you guys will be talking. We want to coordinate with you as much as we possibly can.
Wonderful. The feeling is mutual. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We still have a few minutes until our 6:30 meeting. It's just now six o'clock. Dr. Cook, I wish we could get you mic'd up for sure. I would love to hear again what Norman Public Schools plans to do. And I know that you don't have a crystal ball. I keep hearing this crystal ball is is not clear, but, you know, the numbers are what they are. And sadly, we do have experience with seeing what will happen. I think as Councilman Patron mentioned, and I also appreciated Councilman Beerman's questions about what should we do next? And there are many things that we can do. We have White House Task Force reports asking us to do things. But as we have seen, when their state doesn't do it as a whole, it makes it very, very difficult to have these policies be successful. So, Dr. Cook, if you're able to share anything, my lip reading skills aren't fantastic, but I'm happy to read any of your comments, and I appreciate you being here tonight as well. Do you want to try leaving the meeting and coming back in? Okay, well, perhaps she will leave and come back in. And then I appreciated all of the comments about the indoor sports, especially youth sports. I have received many concerns about that as well. It tends to be a potential for a super spreader event. So I've actually been working with Jason Olson, who I think is now on the call. And I would love for him to share communications he's had with the Optimist Club. And I will point out that since that is on university property, it gets a little complicated.
Yes, Mayor, it does. I'm sorry, I just got to the house, so I can't turn the camera on right now. But the, yeah, the, I've had communication with the Optimist Club, and they did confirm that they, during their volleyball season, which just ended, that they were not necessarily enforcing a face covering rule. They thought there was enough room inside the hangar for everybody to keep social distance. But I have since then corrected them on that rule and told them that, you know, we need to enforce everybody wearing face coverings and giving them some advice on according to what the city is doing on COVID mandates or guidelines as people enter the facility and keeping their face mask on. At the rec centers, we're asking coaches and officials both to wear face masks. The only, only people inside of the gyms during city events that aren't wearing face masks are the active participants. And we pass that on with them. To kind of go along with that, the Optimists did confirm that they will, we did hand them over some signage, and we also gave them some face coverings to use if they needed. And they said that they're going to be enforcing very tightly for their upcoming basketball season.
Thank you for that update. And I would just remind people that if you see issues with masking, you can report it to our Action Center, Monday through Friday, eight to five. But after that, it goes to the non-emergency line of the police department. And Madam Clerk, could you remind me what that number is? It's three?
Three, six, six, five, three, nine, six.
Okay, there you go. I know that we're all wanting a sense of normalcy, but now is not the time for a sense of normalcy. It's just not. Now is the time to hunker down and take it one day at a time and wear your mask. And hopefully within, you know, people say the vaccine is going to be here real quick. As we've discussed, no, it's not. It's just not. So let's be realistic, and maybe six months from now, we can talk about that. But I'm not going to give you false hope. I'm going to give you the knowledge that you can protect yourself by staying away from these gatherings and wearing masks and making safe choices for you and your family. Again, the mask is not just about you, it is about others. And these numbers are skyrocketing, and I know that Norman has done a better job than most communities. We've led the way, but now is not the time to become complacent. And trust me, COVID fatigue is real. I feel it as well. We've had enough run-ins with COVID. We've quarantined for what feels like an eternity. And so I'm both terrified to leave my house and can't stand to be in my house anymore at the same time. So I I understand it, but we're not out of the weeds yet. We're just not. Our numbers are higher than they have ever been before, ever, as we're approaching winter. And in every conversation we've had about COVID-19, I have pointed to history and the 1918 Spanish influenza. The second wave, which was in the fall of 20, excuse me, 1918, was the worst of all of the waves. And that's what we're going into. I'm not trying to scare anyone, I'm trying to be real. This is not rainbows and butterflies and the the begging of people to do the right thing. This is the time to do the right thing. It has never been more of the right time. I am very concerned about governing bodies having to go back to in-person meetings. I'm very concerned that we can spend millions of dollars on legal battles with the tribes over gaming compacts, but somehow can't justify the cost of a special session to protect elected officials around the state who are essentially volunteers. I think our priorities as a state are incredibly, incredibly out of sync with where they need to be. We deserve better, period. We are doing everything we can to keep Norman residents safe, and we need everyone to do their part, because this is not over yet, not in any way, shape or form. So.
I try one more time. Dr. Cook has rejoined us.
We hear you.
Yes.
Okay. So the things that I had wanted to say but couldn't get it out. I would say as far as our hospital data at Norman, it's very similar to what we're seeing in the rest of the metro hospitals, that yes, things are getting tight and reaching capacity. It's not unusual for us to do that in the winter when flu really peaks. And so we know how to deal with that, but the addition of COVID on top of what we already typically deal with is creating a strain on the system. And I think, you know, it's really important for the hospital systems to all work together, which they've been trying to do, to create a plan to evenly distribute the the weight of COVID while protecting their ability to provide the care that they want to be able to provide. So, you know, it would be much more beneficial to prevent illness that's preventable than to limit the surgeries that people need to have done. So, you know, if mask mandates could keep the preventable illnesses out of, from even occurring and keep those from straining the hospitals, that would be far more preferable than, you know, oh, well, when we don't have hospital beds anymore, we should just stop doing surgeries. So, you know, I think mask mandates are certainly helping Norman, and I wish that that, the issue is that that folks who are sick from rural communities often don't have the capacity to treat those illnesses at their local hospitals. And so those patients are using metro hospital beds. And so even when you're following all the rules and doing everything exactly right, there still may not be, you know, availability at your local hospital for you when they're full of of everything else. So I think it's important, if we could get a statewide mask mandate, I think that would be amazing. But it doesn't seem like that's happening. As far as the schools go, I haven't heard an update from Norman Public Schools about, you know, initially when they had decided to go in-person despite, you know, orange level two, which the, that is something that the State Department of Education created on their own map. So that's not on the state COVID risk map. It's on the Department of Education map, the distinction between orange and orange two. And then the Department of Education also has that red level that's at 50 cases per 100,000. And so when the Norman School Board decided that they would continue in-person learning, even once we were at orange two, the idea was that they would stop in-person learning if we reached red. And so at that time, it seemed like an impossible idea that we would ever get to 50 cases per 100,000. Or if they were looking at the state risk map, that red is defined as 14 cases per 100,000, but with a trigger, which is like less than 5% ICU capacity in the whole state, less than 5% medical surgical bed availability for the whole state, less than, I don't remember how they measured the PPE, it was like less than 5% availability of PPE or less than 5% ventilators. And so it seemed like those triggers were so far away from where we were at the time that they could never be reached. But unfortunately, we're getting very close to that, actually have reached that 5% ICU capacity. So it's very possible that that state map could turn red. So I haven't heard confirmation lately that Norman Public Schools still plans to stick with that distance learning only if we reach red, but it is certainly a possibility that we're coming up on red soon. I think those are the main things I wanted to share.
Thank you, Dr. And I'll give another shout out to Dr. Cook and Dr. Bratzler, both doing our weekly emergency management meetings whenever they are available. And to have that kind of information is is very, very helpful as we continue to navigate the unknown with COVID-19 in our community. Any other questions for Dr. Cook while we still have her and a few minutes left before our meeting? Oh, I think you.
I'm not seeing any, Mayor.
All right. Well, Dr. Cook, thank you so much for your time tonight. We will be discussing the mask mandate further later on, so don't go too far.
I actually am not able to stay. I guess, text me if there's an emergency and I need to hop on, but I probably shouldn't stay for the whole meeting.
No, totally understand. Fortunately, I think the facts are pretty clear. I don't think there's much to discuss at this point. But having all of the information for right here in Norman, I think, is incredibly important and has been very, very helpful as we continue this discussion. So thank you. And council members, it is 6:10. We will resume at 6:30 with our regular council meeting. Please turn off your cameras and mute your microphone. Please turn off your cameras and mute your microphone.
His name's there. I don't know if he's there.
We can, Mayor, we can get started as soon as Councilmembers Petron, Beerman and Nash join the meeting.
That was a big side, Councilwoman Foreman.
Trying to get situated. Let's turn off the camera, not the sound.
How do I, um, at what point, Mayor, do I ask to pull something from consent?
What is it?
Um, the land purchase in UMP.
Mayor, that you'll have to, you'll have to amend your script accordingly. That is item. Item 30. So technically then the consent docket would just end with item 29. So you can change that part from items 6 through 29.
All right, are we all here?
I believe so.
Okay. Good evening again and welcome to the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of November 10th, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilwoman Petron?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Nash?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three, approval of the City Council Conference Minutes of April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, City Council Conference Minutes of April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, City Council Study Session Minutes of May fifth, two thousand and twenty, City Council Conference Minutes of May twelfth, two thousand and twenty, City Council Retreat Minutes of October sixteenth and seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, City Council Special Session Minutes of October twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty, and City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Minutes of October twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman? Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item four, proclamation twenty-two-one-nine, proclaiming the month of November two thousand and twenty as Indigenous Peoples' Heritage Month. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of November two thousand and twenty as Indigenous Peoples' Heritage Month in the city of Norman. Whereas, the indigenous population residing within the city of Norman is represented by a unique and diverse population of indigenous peoples from many tribal nations. And whereas, this unique population enriches every aspect of our nation, state, and community, and provides learning experiences not available to many towns, cities, and communities. And whereas, the indigenous population of Norman is represented within every facet of the city, including but not limited to primary, secondary, and higher education, business and nonprofit organizations, federal, state, and tribal services, health professions, industry, the armed services, religion, law enforcement, entertainment, and the fine arts. And whereas, fostering pride in the languages, traditions, and practices that make up the extraordinary richness of indigenous culture is central to our shared progress as a community. And whereas, the beauty and richness of the indigenous culture provides a dynamic presence in the city of Norman that attracts visitors from across the state, nation, and world. Now, therefore, I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of November two thousand and twenty as Indigenous Peoples' Heritage Month in the city of Norman, and encourage all citizens to join me in recognizing the contributions made by indigenous peoples to our community, and in celebrating the diversity and character of our community. I would now like to recognize Arvo Meekanen, president of the Oklahoma Indian Bar Association, owner of Main Street Event Center in downtown Norman, admin of the Facebook group Norman Native News, and former chair of the Board of Directors of the Jacobson House Native Arts Center. Zoom is yours.
Onde onde aim bone, Mayor Clark. That means, in my native language, it was just Kiowa, very glad to see you. I want to thank the representatives of the city of Norman, the council members, and many of the others that are looking and participating in the City Council meeting today. We do appreciate, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself, and also as a representative of many of the Native American people that are here in Norman. Many of you may not know that Native American people make the largest population percentage in the city of Norman. And as Mayor Clark indicated in that proclamation, which I must say is very well worded, our people touch all aspects of life and culture here in Norman. Many of you may not know, but of course, just on the south edge of Norman, we have tribal businesses, the Chickasaw Nation has several businesses, the Kiowa Tribe, my own tribe, I'm Kiowa in Comanche. The Kiowa Tribe has our, one of our offices for District Seven, located right in the city of Norman on Main Street and Twenty-fourth. The Yom Santi Shawnee Tribe also has businesses located in Norman on the east edge of town. And as well as those businesses, myself, my wife, Tracy Sabahudal Meekanen, myself, Arvo Meekanen, we operate a business right in the center of Main Street, which is called the Main Street Event Center. And we're not focused necessarily strictly on Native American issues, but that is so, one of the unique aspects of our participation in the economic communities, being able to serve the native community, but also serve the community at large. And that's particularly important during these times with the pandemic. And I think all of you know that businesses, including our own, have been very severely affected by the situation that we all find ourselves in. So again, we want to recognize and celebrate, and thank you for considering recognizing Native American people and indigenous people for this month. One thing that I did want to mention also, a lot of people don't realize it, but we are unique in that our people are individual citizens of unique tribal nations. There are over five hundred and fifty tribal nations throughout the United States here in Oklahoma. As many of you know, we have thirty-nine distinct tribal nations that are as different from one another as France, and England, and Germany, or Japan. We speak different languages, we have unique cultures, we celebrate arts. And not just participate in that sense, but also as tribal governments. I'm also a lawyer, and have been president of the Oklahoma Indian Bar Association. And it's one other unique aspect that we, as Native American people, we are also not just a racial group, but we are citizens of distinct nations that preexisted the United States, and of course, preexisted the state of Oklahoma. So again, we have a lot of things here in Norman, such as the Jacobson House Native American Arts Center. There are a lot of other participants in the community at OU. We have one of the largest populations of Native American students. We have a very well-known Indian law program at the OU Law School. There's just many different aspects of Native American culture that we hope that all the citizens of Norman recognize, participate in, and celebrate during this month. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Meekanen, and you and I can work out a time. I'll make sure you get a signed copy of that proclamation.
Thank you, I do appreciate it.
You're welcome. And for those of you that are watching, I encourage you to visit the social media of the American Indian Student Association. You can always count on the University of Oklahoma to provide a lot of events that are always open to the Norman community. But please, 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 make sure you wear your masks if you decide to attend and enjoy the festivities. Thank you, sir. All right, on to item five, which is the consent docket.
Mayor Clark? Excuse me for interrupting, I believe Councilmember Holman wanted to make a statement.
My apologies, Councilmember Holman.
No, I appreciate the opportunity. I did just want to mention, since it was brought up, the Jacobson House is in Ward Seven. And I have been recently approached by some folks about the current condition of the building itself, and it needing some help potentially to get it fixed up so it remains a usable and, you know, historic place that we've known it. So just wanted to mention that, that that's something I hope the council, the city, that we can talk about maybe in a partnership with the university or whoever, that we can look into that further going forward. So thank you very much for being here, and I definitely appreciate supporting this proclamation.
Well, certainly, and a lot of people think that OU basically runs the Jacobson House, and actually, the Jacobson Foundation, for those of you who don't know, there were six Kiowa, five men, one woman, who came in the nineteen twenties and were mentored by Oscar Jacobson, who was the chair of the art school. And the Jacobson House is over a hundred years old. And it's supported by basically volunteers and fundraisers. And the foundation actually has to pay OU to keep the house open. OU owns the house, but does not support it. So I really do appreciate the recognition for that possible collaboration and other programming with the city to support the house. It's one of the oldest buildings in Norman, and structurally, it does need a lot of work.
Excellent point, Councilmember Holman. And I can't wait for when we can safely go back to the drumming and Indian tacos at the Jacobson Center. That's one of my favorites. All right, any other comments? Okay, saying none. Thanks again, Mr. Meekanen. We'll go on to item five now, which is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items six through twenty-nine on the consent docket.
So moved.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to place items six through twenty-nine on the consent docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilwoman Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item six, ordinance twenty-two-one-eight upon first reading, amending the site plan adopted in ordinance zero-three-zero-four-three-three for property located at five-twelve North Interstate Drive. Item seven, ordinance twenty-two-one-ten upon first reading, amending the city code to add a definition for base level engineering, incorporate and adopt the new Federal Emergency Management Agency report dated January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, eliminate references of the conditional letter of map revision, and allowing for additional information to be considered in certain zones in the absence of base flood elevation data and floodway data. Item eight, ordinance twenty-two-one-twelve upon first reading, rezoning property located at two thousand and one East Rock Creek Road from RE Residential Estates District to A-one General Agricultural District. Item nine, ordinance twenty-two-one-thirteen upon first reading, granting special use for light manufacturing and special use for a bar, lounge, or tavern in C-two intensive commercial district for property located at one oh-nine East Tonawa Street, Suite one-twenty only. Item ten, ordinance twenty-two-one-fourteen upon first reading, granting special use for municipal uses in A-two Rural Agricultural District for property located at thirty-nine oh-one Chautauqua Avenue. Item eleven, submission of the Norman Convention and Visitors Bureau Incorporated twenty-twenty annual report through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Item twelve, authorization for the purchase of buildings and contents insurance from affiliated FM Insurance Company in the amount of three hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars from December first, two thousand and twenty, to December first, two thousand and twenty-one, and budget appropriation from the Risk Management Fund balance. Item thirteen, acceptance of a request for proposal and approval of a contract and associated bonds with United Turf and Track in the amount of six hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars for the Norman Forward Griffin Park Phase Four Northwest Field Improvements Project. Item fourteen, acceptance of a bid and approval of a contract and associated bonds with Nash Construction Company in the amount of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents for the FYE two thousand and twenty-one concrete sidewalk project with a tax-exempt resolution and budget transfer. Item fifteen, bid for the purchase of Portland Seamit Concrete for the street and stormwater divisions. Item sixteen, easement in the amount of three thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars from Quest Church Incorporated for the Thirty-Sixth Avenue Northwest Bond Project from Tecumseh Road to Indian Hills Road. Item seventeen, temporary easement donated by Quest Church Incorporated for the Thirty-Sixth Avenue Northwest Bond Project from Tecumseh Road to Indian Hills Road. Item eighteen, an easement, a permanent drainage easement donated by Bill and Linda Roscoe to serve Grandview Estates, North Edition Number Two. Item nineteen, Norman Rural Certificate of Survey for Harmon Estates, south side of Rock Creek Road, mile west of Sixtieth Avenue Northeast. Item twenty, Norman Rural Certificate of Survey for San Plum Hills, generally located on the west side of one hundred and thirty-second Avenue Southeast, approximately one quarter mile south of Post Oak Road. Item twenty-one, acceptance of a donation in the amount of five hundred dollars from the J.M. Williams Revocable Trust to be used by the police department. Item twenty-two, amendment number two to the contract with Howland Van Kieran Incorporated, increasing the contract amount by forty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars for a revised contract amount of five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars, plus an additional five hundred dollars for reimbursable expenses to provide additional design services for the preparation of construction documents, bidding services, and construction supervision for the Norman Forward Ruby Grant Park. Item twenty-three, change order number three to the contract with Central Contracting Services Incorporated, decreasing the contract amount by three thousand, six hundred and three dollars and fifty-three cents for a revised contract amount of one million, five hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-four cents for the urban concrete pavement project, FYE two thousand and nineteen locations, and final acceptance of the project. Item twenty-four, change order number one to the contract with Silver Star Construction Company Incorporated, increasing the contract by sixty-five thousand, thirteen dollars for a revised amount of one million, five hundred and five thousand, thirteen dollars for the urban concrete pavement project, FYE two thousand and twenty locations, and final acceptance of the project. Item twenty-five, change order number one to the contract with EMC Services LLC, increasing the contract amount by one hundred and three thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars for a revised contract amount of four hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars for the Vicksburg Channel Line replacement project, final acceptance of the project, and budget transfer. Item twenty-six, contract with Norman Affordable Housing Corporation Incorporated and Norman Community Housing Development two thousand and fifteen Incorporated in the amount of six hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars as agreed upon under the FYE two thousand and twenty-one Home Investment Partnership Program to construct three three-bedroom, single-family structures located at one-twelve and one-fourteen West Johnson Street and eight-fifteen North Stewart Avenue to be used for affordable housing in the city of Norman. Item twenty-seven, ratification of a declaration of an emergency approval of a contract with Thompson Consulting Services in an amount not to exceed one million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars to provide disaster debris monitoring services for damages from the ice storm on October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty, and budget transfer. Item twenty-eight, amendment number two to the resolution establishing a charter review commission to conduct a targeted review of the Norman City Charter and to report its findings to City Council. Item twenty-nine, resolution authorizing the Norman Municipal Authority to seek financing proposals in connection with the issuance of the Authority Sales Tax Revenue Note Series two thousand and twenty. And item thirty has been removed from consent. So I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Lisa Craig to make a quick presentation on item twenty-six.
Hi there, this is Lisa. I'm over here in Jane's office. I'm having some computer problems tonight. So I want to take a few minutes to talk to you guys about the proposed contract with the Norman Affordable Housing Corporation and the Norman Chodo. So as we, we work towards this partnership, part of what needs to be understood is the need for affordable housing within Norman. This is just a brief little snapshot of the latest data in the American Community Survey, one hundred and seventeen, three fifty, forty-four, nine occupied housing units, median household income, fifty-one, four ninety-one. I won't really bore you with all of this, this mundane statistics, but I will call your attention to looking at the household income of renter occupied units and the household income of owner occupied units. You can see here that the overall income of the, of the renter occupied units is substantially less than what of the owner occupied units are, as well as the, the composition of the households. Renters comprise forty-four point two percent of the population, owners fifty-five point eight. So it is skewed a little bit towards the owners as far as the numbers, but the, the, the income of the renter occupied units is substantially lower. And so this project is going to be addressing the need for affordable rental housing. This slide just briefly goes into the types of incomes that we're looking at, as well as the, the numbers of households in those incomes and the typical occupations that, that occur.
Lisa Craig, are we supposed to be seeing slides?
Yes, you are. I'm sorry. Let me try this again here. Oh, it didn't click. Okay. Just one second here. How about that? Is that better?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay, so just briefly. Let me go back here. Let me go back here. This is the typical occupations that we find within these income categories. What we are primarily looking at with this program is the category of 50% to 80% of the median family income. Dental hygienist, administrative assistant, schoolteachers, households that range from 34.7% to about 55.5% income-wise. Again, the information we get from the Census Bureau shows that as far as renter occupied households, that there are severely cost burdened households, about 28% or 5,600 households pay more than 50% of their median family monthly household income towards their housing expenses. And then 30%, 19% pay more than 30%. What all of these statistics show is that within the city of Norman, there is a gap of a little over, almost 9,400 affordable rental units, and a gap of about 4,200 owner units. If you consider that HUD considers anybody that is paying more than 30% of their income towards housing expenses cost burdened. And the numbers of the available housing units is 9,400 less than the tenants that need to be occupying those at an affordable rate. So as we have come to you guys previously with our consolidated plan and our action plans, the city of Norman requires, receives home investment partnership funds. It's an allocation that we receive from HUD each year. And with this allocation, we're required to invest 15% of these funds to a community housing development organization. Chodo, it's the HUD alphabet soup. It is a very specific 501(c)(3) nonprofit with a board structure that limits the number of governmental officials and requires a minimum amount of low-income residents to serve on that board. Currently, the Norman Chodo has been certified as our Chodo. Current year, our funding's 412, 569, which required a minimum investment of 61, 886 to the Chodo. The way the HUD requires this to work is the Chodo is responsible for developing a project and bringing it to the city of Norman for our consideration. And so that is what we have before us tonight, is the proposal that they have brought forth. With the consolidated plan that comes before you every five years, last May, we did our consolidated plan. Development of affordable rental housing has been a listed goal with the last three consolidated plans. Those are five-year plans, so for the last 15 years, we've had this as an established goal. And then with each year with the action plan, we designate funding to go towards both the development of the affordable housing, as well as to the Chodo. As I said, this is approved and developed by the policy committee, forwarded to City Council for their approval, and then the City Council forwards it to HUD for approval each year. So our current project, three single-family homes located at 112, 114 West Johnson and at 815 North Stewart. These are infill lots that have been vacant for quite some time. They comply with the, what we're proposing complies with all the zoning requirements. Structures are approximately 1,600 square feet. They each have a single-car garage. They were designed to meet the proposed City of Norman visitability ordinance. Briefly, what that is, is that the threshold is at level. The bathroom is accessible, has the turning radius, and can, you know, the sink and toilet all have the appropriate grab bars. The light switches are a little bit lower. The outlets are a little bit higher. The hallway is 42 inches. Special consideration is given to a window. This is not technically an accessible unit. It is designed that if someone that has a physical disability can visit the unit. And then again, this has been a listed goal within the last three consolidated plans. The way these projects that we have done in the past, it's a three-way partnership between the City of Norman Home Investment Partnerships Program, the Norman Chodo, as I said, is a 501(c)(3) with a very specific board structure, and their mission is to develop affordable housing. They are designated as the project sponsor according to the HUD guidelines. Our third partner is the Norman Affordable Housing Corporation, which again is a 501(c) nonprofit. Their mission is developing and operating affordable housing. They will be the owner and operator of these projects after completion. Previously, we have done three projects with this arrangement. Tuscany Village, which was an acquisition rehab of 16 two-bedroom apartments. Vicksburg is on Vicksburg Circle. It was new construction. It was six two-bedroom apartments, four of which were accessible. Hubert were four one-bedroom apartments, one of which was accessible. So Norman Affordable Housing Corporation, you have heard me talk about this many times, and they are a big player in this because they are actually, whereas we designate funds for the Chodo as required by HUD, Norman Affordable Housing Corporation is bringing their own money into these deals. And to give you just a brief history of how they were able to assemble this portfolio of housing that generate these funds goes back to 1971, when the Kingsgate Apartments were constructed. They were a privately owned HUD subsidized unit of affordable 100 units. 12th and Lindsay, right now, there's a strip mall and a...
CVS, Lisa.
Yes, CVS. I wanted to say Walgreens, I knew that wasn't right. Over time, the property really declined due to deferred maintenance. There were several different owners that kind of went and out of the picture. And then in 1997, HUD foreclosed on the property. There were only 35 units that were occupied at that time. So HUD demolished the property, sold it to the city of Norman for $10 with the requirement that either we had to develop affordable housing on the site, or we had to reinvest the proceeds from the sale of the land for affordable housing. So a team of people got together, explored multiple redevelopment options, including let's build some affordable housing. They determined that the highest and the best use for that location would be commercial development. Property sold $2 million to a private developer. And then those proceeds were actually divvied up. $100,000 went to Habitat for Humanity, and the remainder of the funds went to the Norman Affordable Housing Corporation. The city remained in control of the funds until properties were identified that were appropriate for investing in. And so there was actually quite a bit of interest that was gained over that because it took about five years for all this to actually, you know, transpire. So what Norman Affordable Housing Corporation did was they purchased multiple single-family units that they rent at affordable rates. And so they look at household incomes, the composition of the households, and back into what is an affordable rate for households that are 80% below median income. So with this, they have actually generated enough money through the collection of this rent that they have about $120,000 annually that they reinvest into projects with partnerships with us. This will be the fourth project that we have done with them. So this project, our total development cost is $765,945, of which the Home Investment Partnership Program is providing $535, 686, the Chodo $118, 134, and the Affordable Housing Corporation $112, 125. And so the uses of those funds were the acquisition of the three lots, obviously, the construction costs. And then to ensure the continued affordability of the property, we go ahead and fund the initial reserve replacement for these properties. That's just the property savings account that is a deposit made to each year by the manager to ensure that as things need replaced, such as appliances, roofs, things like that, that there is the capital money there to do that. So these properties, once the construction is completed, they'll be turned over to the Affordable Housing Corporation from the Chodo. The Chodo, as I said, is operating as the sponsor of this. The Norman Affordable Housing Corporation will be taking care of the management and leasing of the properties. Each of these properties requires a 20-year period of affordability. We secure this with a D to trust filed at the courthouse. Annual reports go back and forth between the Norman Affordable Housing Corporation and the city. There are annual housing quality inspections that are done on this, as well as the tracking of the tenants that are in these units to make sure they qualify income-wise. So regarding the affordability, the first occupants at all home projects are required to be at or below 60% median family income, meaning that these are three-bedroom units. So if it's a four-person household, the household income would need to be below 37.2. Once that initial occupant has moved on, the remaining occupants for the period of 20 years can be at or below 80% median income, which is 59.5 for a four-person household. These numbers are set each year by HUD, as well as determining how much rent could actually be charged. The rent gets backed into, oops, sorry, gets backed into by determining that 30% affordability for the household income. The rent for these units are going to be right at $800 a month plus utilities. Just to kind of show you the layout of the properties, as we said, there's a zero-height entrance, large living, dining, kitchen, 42-inch wide hallway, three bedrooms, it's two baths, one bath is accessible, laundry, you know, the typical amenities that you would find in a three-bedroom home. And then here's some sketches of the elevations. So the two on Johnson Street will have different elevations, so they don't look exactly alike. And then the one on Stewart will have a similar. So just to kind of wrap this up, I know this is a lot of information, but here in the CDBG office that we wholeheartedly believe that affordable housing is framed in the manner of economic development, and it is used as a mechanism to strengthen the community's workforce. And so we have just a little formula that we use that economic development means workforce, means humans, means places to live. And as you've heard me speak before, that it is very important that we are developing housing across all income spectrums so that the variety of housing for the persons in the different income spectrums is readily available so that the affordability can be maintained. So at that time, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Craig. I know we've been talking a lot about affordable housing, so I requested that presentation. It is a lot of information. But Madam Clerk, is there any questions?
Yes, Councilmember Beerman, I believe, was first.
Hi Lisa, first, I just wanted to put my shout out and give you a big thank you for your support of the proposed visitability ordinance. I love seeing it put into practice because that is obviously the point. But I also wanted to make sure to point out that that, what we do in visitable homes also creates a pretty strong starting point for any future accessibility grants that an occupant or the Affordable Housing Corporation might receive. What you do when you construct the home is, it's so much more cost-effective to do it when you're building it versus trying to widen doorways and, you know, create studs behind bathrooms for grab bars and et cetera. So I really appreciate being able to see that put into practice. A question about the land sale at 12th and Lindsay. I actually lived in those townhouses for a year. I have a feeling I could overhear every single thing that someone in the drive-thru window said about their prescriptions. I'm sure that that's not actually legal. But have we used that whole $2 million? Is that what I see from that slide? So what is the investment derived from? That $120,000 that we get from the investments every year, is that from those affordable housing properties?
Right. What we had is, because it took so long for the funds to be invested, that Anthony actually facilitated being able to get the $2 million in an interest-bearing account. So we actually had more than $2 million. The $120,000 is what the profit that Norman Affordable Housing generates after they have paid for audits, paid for maintenance, paid for insurance of the rent that they are receiving from those units that they purchased with the Kingsgate funds.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. And then this is kind of a nitpicky question, but that percentage of the median incomes, I know you said that it's set by HUD. Is there anything preventing us from using that lower median percentage, the 60% for the entire 20-year duration, rather than bumping it up to 80%?
Um, not really. We would have to change our policies and procedures to do that. It would affect the overall cash flow of the Norman Affordable Housing Corporation and their ability to invest in projects.
It would also keep those units for the ones who can afford it the least, which is where I was kind of going for with that, is that it maintains that level of affordability for the people who have the least wiggle room in their income.
True. Right, it would increase the development cost because we would have to, we do a pro forma for these and take into account that rent change as to the increased maintenance that is needed on the property. So it would require more of an upfront investment from the program to make the property cash flow over 20 years.
Sure, well, and I certainly wouldn't want to look back on those, but I think it's something to consider with future projects if it's financially feasible. I would certainly love to keep the few units we have for the ones who can afford it the least. So I just was curious whether or not that was completely set in stone. So that's something I at least, I would at least like to kick around in the future. Maybe not every development is going to be possible with that, but maybe some are more feasible than others, so.
Well, what we have found is that there really isn't much tenant turnover in these. And so while after that first tenant has moved on, you can raise the rent, we're not really seeing that really happening that often, so.
Sure, that makes sense too. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I appreciate all the work on this, Lisa, and bringing up or explaining the story about Kingsgate. That location is in Ward 7, and I actually grew up in the apartment complex next to it. My mom and my grandparents lived there at different times when I was a kid growing up. And it was, as terrible as it may sound, it was the type of place where I can recall I grow roaches climbing up out of the kitchen seam type of thing. And very, Lisa, I think, has sent me them before, but has some pretty cool-looking pictures of the apartment complex before it was torn down. At least, they're very interesting anyway. And then what's happened since the first real new or modern mixed-use project was developed there, multiple stories with commercial on the bottom and then a CVS on the corner, I guess. So a very interesting story behind that and how we got these funds. And I appreciate explaining what we've been able to do over time because I see that question come up a lot in the community about what has the city done? What is the city or the City Council doing about affordable housing or homelessness? And some have the impression that we do nothing about it. And that's really, couldn't be further from the truth of the matter. We've been able to do a lot, we could always do more, of course. My main question, though, is you mentioned these new units would be $800 a month plus utilities, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So my, I may have a skewed view of what is affordable or not, I'm not sure. But to me, affordable, 800-plus utilities is not what I would consider affordable. And I don't know all the ramifications go, you know, into that number, but to me, affordable would be like 500 or 600, maybe, utilities included. You know, based on what I pay for rent and utilities, I mean, I don't know what the average rent in Norman is. I know it's probably gone up in recent years. But based on minimum wage not changing in Oklahoma since 2007, tipped minimum wage not changing since 1991 in the United States, and a lot of our workers being, you know, workers and single parents, a lot of them working service industry jobs that are even more so impacted now because of COVID. So I just want to throw that out there that, you know, that to me wouldn't seem as affordable. It may be affordable compared to some of the real high rents we are seeing in new developments in Norman, I could see. But that would be kind of my concern and have the interest in anything we could do to maybe work on bringing that down or if there's assists, because I know utilities also have deposits and things like that sometimes. I don't know if these properties will require the deposit. if these properties will require the deposits and all that. So those are just things that I started thinking about, and so I appreciate, again, all the work you've done.
We actually have a worksheet that I can get to Brenda, and she can send out to y'all that shows how we work with the HUD regulations as far as what is required and allowable for rent and utility allowances to back end of what the affordable rent is. And I can send that to you, which really shows the math on where the numbers come from.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Ms. Craig, for your presentation, and really for your years of investment as a City of Norman employee in advancing affordable housing and taking advantage of money that we can apply for to use for these sorts of things. So I first became interested in this general topic a few years ago, because the need was so great, and served for a brief period of time on the CDBG Policy Committee. And I've mentioned this multiple times, but I found it really stunning that the need for affordable housing for rentals, just rentals, not even including the owner occupied, but is over 9,000 units is what we need. And so the need is not going to go away. I am so gratified, even though we're not anywhere near close to 9,000, that we continue to chip away, that we continue to do what we can and to do a variety of kind of projects. So this round, we're doing single-family homes, you've explained the other types of units that we've done. So trying to offer different types of housing to, you know, to meet the needs. So I just appreciate all of the work that you've invested as a City of Norman employee and all the partners that help make all of this happen, and our nonprofits that end up being the operators for this. And so I, too, wanted to mention the, how much I appreciated incorporating the visibility requirements, even though we, it's still in draft ordinance form, but appreciate you, considering that before construction, when it's still, you know, relatively affordable to be able to incorporate those kinds of things, because it just gives the housing a lot more flexibility in who can actually live there. So I really appreciate that. And also, I just wanted to make the comment about, you know, these are infill projects in core Norman, in parts of town that already have established neighborhoods. So I appreciate the care that you've taken in the design of the homes to fit into the neighborhood and not just building one, I know you've got very similar construction to, you know, keep the construction costs low, but appreciate the fact that the lots that are right next to each other, that you've taken the care to make them look just a little bit different. So I appreciate that, too, as we're building neighborhoods and, you know, trying to make people feel really proud of where they live. So I appreciate all your work on this and your presentation.
Well, thank you all for your continued support on this. I have to give a shout out to James Heath, one of our staff people, who actually did the design for these. And so we had some cost savings there, and we're able to have a lot of input into the process, so.
Councilmember Nash.
Yes, I think you mentioned accessibility. Norman's intellectual reservoir happens to contain one of the world's foremost innovators in accessible housing design. Has Dave Beck been consulted with a little bit?
Yeah, Dave Beck actually designed the Vicksburg project for us.
Okay.
Yep. And then the Hubert project was actually a partnership with the university, with the architecture students doing the design and part of the construction.
And Dave Beck also had his hands very deeply in the development of the visitability ordinance, which was used for these designs. So there is no way we could have developed any kind of plan like that without a lot of feedback from him.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Mayor, seeing no other hands raised.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Craig, again, for that very helpful presentation. Okay, are there any other comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket?
Seeing none.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Patrone?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Thank you. We're now on to item 30, which is the contract purchase and sale agreement with the New York City Tax Increment Finance Authority and University Town Center LLC for the purchase of 12 acres of real property in the vicinity of 24th Avenue Northwest and West Rock Creek Road for a purchase price of $2,69,971 and budget appropriation from the University of North Park Tax Increment Finance Fund balance. Madam Clerk, please tell me the procedure that we're going to need to follow, now that that's been called off consent.
We still need to get a motion to approve the contract and a second, and then you can open it up for discussion.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract.
Double motion, second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council regarding this item?
Councilmember Patrone.
Okay, so the reason why I asked that this item be removed from consent was because there's quite a bit of gaps in information and blanks and just to-be-decided-laters, and we don't really know yet. And so I was hoping that I could speak with City Legal and the rest of you council members, because it felt like if we're going to be passing a contract that's missing important terms, that we all need to be under that understanding ourselves, that I haven't, not really familiar with real estate purchase contracts that don't describe the property. That's kind of the number-one thing that you typically add as to what it is that you're buying. And so I would like to give City Legal an opportunity to speak to some of that, as well as the to-be-decided-laters on the deed restrictions. Those are the rules that you play by when you buy a piece of property. We haven't, as, just for the public that's listening, we haven't spoken or, you know, had a discussion about this particular purchase in executive session. So I'm asking these questions for the first time. Typically, my understanding is that it's quite common that we would have a, you know, discussion of a real estate offers in executive session, where we would, you know, decide whether or not it was what we wanted to do. And so I'm fine with it being in public, I just want to make sure that I'm fully armed with the information before I would vote on something. So I guess I would start with asking if we can get some clarification as to why there isn't any specificity to the parcels, whether the two acres or the 10 acres, and why not?
Well, we're purchasing the full 12 acres. Two of those are being acquired at no cost to the city. The 10 acres are being acquired at a cost of $2.06 million. That was all consistent with what was provided for in the 2019 amended and restated master agreement and contemplated about the 2019 University of North Park Project Plan amendments. They aren't separated on the drawing, as what's being donated and what's not. That drawing that you see as the exhibit to the agreement is 12 acres of property. The reason we don't have a legal description yet is because that may still be slightly adjusted as we continue to finalize the design. UTC has been really good about being willing to work with us as we get through the last stages of that process, so that if we need to make adjustments, we can. We do anticipate that being done in the next 30 days, and so that is why you just see the schematic design. Everyone's agreed on the general location, there just may be little differences in where some of those lines are drawn, so we wanted to maximize the flexibility as we move forward with the final design.
Why wouldn't we be separating out the 10 acres from the two acres?
We're purchasing, it's preliminary platted, it's not been final platted, so we're purchasing, acquiring the full 12 acres. It really is, makes no difference to the city. The primary difference would be the UTC as to that donation and any tax benefit they get from that. But for our purposes, we're acquiring the full 12 acres regardless of how much is donated and how much is purchased, the price remains the same.
Under the 2019 project plan, where we, or under this purchase agreement, this purchase agreement speaks to the right of UTC to repurchase. If a future council or whatever, if it doesn't become workable, that this project goes there, which, by the way, I totally foresee it going there, and just, there, why would we lump in and give away our right to the two acres in with the other 10 and give away those rights?
This is entirely consistent with the agreement that council approved last November. So the language you see in there about a reversionary right, going back to the developer, if we don't develop within certain timeframes, that's always been a part of the agreement. What we updated here was the actual deadlines. Obviously, with COVID in the spring, and then with the bond issue in August, some things were delayed, and we didn't get that final site plan done until very recently. And so we updated those deadlines, but that same concept of that property reverting back to the developer if we aren't to develop it within a certain timeline is entirely consistent with that 2019 agreement.
Okay, let me say it differently. Let's say that by chance, we're able to come up with a drawing that doesn't require us to use the other two acres, and a future council would like to sell that two acres to put in just somewhere else in the city, perhaps a different Norman Ford project. Under, when we group them together like this, it sounds like we're not able to do that.
Well, the benefit to us in that respect, by grouping them together, when we develop the project on that site, whether it takes all 12 acres or not, we've met that obligation under the agreement and developed it within the timeframe.
Right, but can we still go ahead and sell off the part of the acreage that we wouldn't want?
That would require replating at some point. At this point, we've got that site pretty well-covered. I don't think there would be two acres available that's not needed for this project.
Okay, well, again, hypothetically speaking, just if we wanted to sell off excess land that we are entering into here, hypothetically speaking, can we do so?
I think we would be able to do so, provided that we had built the $22.5 million multi-sport indoor aquatic facility as required by the agreement.
Okay. And then my next question on the site of it is, why aren't we putting it closer to Rock Creek Road, considering the traffic impacts? There's that six acres there that doesn't look like it's been developed for anybody else, but why did we choose this parcel over closer to access for visiting teams?
We understood all along that the out parcels were something that the developer would want to retain for retail development, but also, all along, we've been discussing shared parking with Embassy Suites, and so having it adjacent to that back lot that we would be sharing with Embassy Suites made sense.
Okay, that was going to be another question, was whether or not we had a parking agreement, if those talks have taken place?
Yes, they're ongoing, they've been very open to it. I don't anticipate that being a problem, but we don't have a formal agreement yet.
So just for right now, if we vote on this tonight, it's, without having a property description in the purchase contract, it leaves it up to the city manager to just pick an area in, and go with it, fill in that blank?
Well, I think it would certainly be consistent with Exhibit A. Lines may be minor, you know, there may be minor changes to the lines or to the alignment of the parcel, but it would be consistent with that exhibit.
Okay. So, several questions, so if you'll just be patient with me, guys. On the mineral rights, wasn't this owned by the federal government prior to UTC?
It was owned by the federal government, then it was owned by OU and then the foundation, and then it was conveyed to UTC in the early 2000s.
Who retained the mineral rights along the way?
I'm not sure. I don't think UTC obtained mineral rights, from my recollection. I would imagine they are held by OU. I know they own the mineral rights on the north half.
Okay, can we investigate that to see if they are the ones that have retained it? In other words, I wouldn't want to go ahead and buy something when we can have the mineral rights with it. I don't see why we wouldn't take those as well. On this one particularly, sometimes it's really hard to figure that out, and, you know, as far as it's had several different owners over time, but this is a unique area that hasn't.
And typically, those types of rights are not conveyed parcel-by-parcel like this, but I can definitely check on that for you.
Thank you. The contract speaks quite a bit to environmental, potential for environmental issues. Has UTC had any properties within the UMP, or even non-UTC, other property owners, if there are others, that have been flagged in environmental studies?
No, not to my knowledge. I don't, I have not heard of any issue like that in UMP, and we certainly didn't experience anything like that, would like to see part.
Okay, so with respect to the infrastructure improvement, what does UMP typically pay, or UT, the district, whether it's the owners' UTC or the UMP tip itself, what does it typically cover when it comes to streets and different infrastructure-related costs?
So typically, when UTC has come forward with a plat, they are the developer of the entire plat. So, you know, they brought it forward in sections. This is an area that was preliminary platted in 2006, maybe 2005. And so they've come forward with section by section, depending on what they're developing at the time, a final plat. And they are putting in the infrastructure for their final plat. Here, and we had quite a bit of discussion about this, because it makes sense, in one sense, to plat this entire property from Embassy Suites to Rock Creek Road, airport to 24th. Makes sense to do that, but for UTC, they're not sure what they're going to do with the remainder of that property yet, and especially because of things in the retail world right now. I think that's just a little uncertain for them. And so we're just plating our own property, so we are responsible for the infrastructure we need to develop our property.
Okay, so is there a recoupment or something that takes place for that remaining six acres that we're going to have to be connecting to infrastructure for? You're saying that they want to put some stores in, my understanding is sports stores related to...
Potentially, yeah. So if, you know, when they plat the remainder of the property, they would be putting in any roads, they'd be putting in any water sewer connections they needed, extending any water lines, they needed things like that to develop their own property. We're only taking care of what we need to develop ours.
Okay, well, on the drawing, it shows the road, is that already complete for where the site would be for the recreational facility all the way to Rock Creek Road?
It is not complete. That's something that we will be putting in place as access to our site.
Okay, and would we be putting that road in all the way to Rock Creek Road, crossing over for access to those other two parcels that abut Rock Creek Road?
Yes, yes.
Is there, they would be paying their portion like they would for the remaining parcels had they brought forth a full plat plan?
We haven't gotten that far yet. We've discussed internally about, you know, how that would be built, public street, private street, that kind of thing. And so that's something we'll be fleshing out as we move forward, that we're prepared to build that road, to access our property.
I understand for access of ours, I'm just trying to understand what they're, you know, for the taxpayer, what they can expect to reasonably get back on behalf of private business.
Yeah, under our ordinances, council does. Yeah, under our ordinances, council does sometimes create a recoupment district so that as as future property develops, the roadway improvement has occurred ahead of that development that that cost gets recouped. And that's something that could be an option here when the road does get built.
Okay, so I would hope that we could have a conversation amongst council members here in a little bit because should we decide to pass this, then we need to make sure that we're not passing on the buck on to the taxpayers to pick up for private companies. So on the traffic side of it, if I didn't see any like hold harmless here. I know right now that this, we don't anticipate that there would be a traffic classification. I think we're D or something in the area that we don't expect that this would change that classification. I'm wondering if there is a hold harmless that, you know, they can't come back and say, well, you made the area so congested with putting this project that we wanted in here. So what happens in that situation?
So we've done some preliminary look at this and we don't believe this is going to cause the kind of traffic counts that would necessitate a change to the adopted traffic impact analysis for this area. If something did later, you know, if this project gets built and it's shown that we need more to be done, that's something we could certainly put in as a capital project. If future development changes and is not consistent with the TIA, they would be paying for those improvements typically. So it all depends on what ends up getting developed and how consistent it is with the TIA that's in place now. This is such a unique facility. It's, it's going to be different than typical retail, which was planned for this area. Its peaks, both AM and PM peaks are likely to be lower. It's just going to be during special events where there's probably more traffic and that's not really calculated in the TIA or in the your typical traffic impact analysis.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going with it. I wondered, you know, obviously it wasn't planned for this kind of facility, so.
And that's part of the reason why that connection to Rock Creek Road is so important. You want that traffic to get out at a lit intersection rather than coming out onto 24th where there's not a traffic light. So you know, that that was always part of the the plan is to try and move that traffic out to that intersection rather than just somewhere else on 24th.
Well, it kind of brings me full circle because I I had in thinking about it, it seemed like it made more sense traffic wise that we would have it on Rock Creek Road, that we would have that abutting to where you don't have so much congestion that's happening on streets that really weren't meant to service that kind of congestion.
Yeah, and we looked at that, but then we also have the shared parking issue with Embassy Suites. So this is just where where it made the most sense.
And then on that, actually, is the parking lot that is shown in the sketch, is that taking into consideration the Embassy Park Embassy Suites parking lot?
I may let Judd answer that. I know that he's been in contact with the architects about that. I do believe it is and we've tried to get as much parking as we think we'll need on that 12 acre site, but we know that for special events, we'll have to have some sharing.
Yeah, that's correct. The it does take into consideration they line up. But and as Catherine said, Embassy Suites is talking with us now about the a formal agreement that they're interested in doing the shared parking.
So is is Catherine spoke to that it's basically overflow parking for that we would be using from the embassy for large events, but it wouldn't be. We've spoken a lot here as a council in recent months and really it's been over a year at least that I know of about trying to reduce, you know, the parking lots that we put in and have less requirements even from our commercial banks and everywhere else. Would it be something that have you all had talks with Embassy about potentially cutting our parking in half and not it not being overflow parking, but actually relying on Embassy Suites parking lot if it's going to be placed next to Embassy Suites parking lot?
No, we haven't done what you just suggested. We haven't suggested cutting our parking in half. We have talked to them about you being used as overflow parking. And but we are trying to design our parking to accommodate the facility, but still be a minimum. We're not, in other words, we're not trying to overbuild it at all because we know we do have the existing parking to the south. So we'll do just what we need to do. And then for the larger events, we'll be able to use their existing parking.
Okay, well, I will leave comments to that to Councilmember Peacock because I'm sure that he's going to be raising his hand soon on that. So, okay. On the architectural review board with the UMP, is this such a board that if they come back and say, yeah, we don't like your building, that the council can change the requirements for this building for what the architectural review board of UMP is can approve? In other words, at what point does UMP have the right to say, we don't like your building, so you're not going to build it that way?
So I can only describe to you what that process typically looks like. We went through that with Legacy Park and we've been through it on the entryway signs and things like that. And every building out there has been reviewed by the ARB. The ARB is not UMP, it's not UTC, but it has representatives. It's chaired by Rick McKinney, Bob Goins is on it and a couple of other local folks serve on that. And they typically, that process is very collaborative. Turn in the app, you turn in your initial designs and they kind of work with you and try and figure out, you know, if something's not working, how can we make it work? I think we've already had preliminary conversations with them about this facility. So I don't anticipate that being a huge issue, but it is a step required to go through.
Okay, on the in the recitals of the contract, it speaks to the 2019 project plan having 5.154 million for this project. And then you go on to state like subsection I or one was 350 for MPS and then two seems to suggest that the remainder is construction supplement. Is that correct?
Yes, it's about 2.7 million, I believe.
2.7 million plus the 350?
Yes, and that $5 million figure also includes the land purchase funds.
Okay, gotcha. The 350, it doesn't for the MPS, it doesn't say the number of years that that is supposed to cover?
I believe the original estimates were $50,000 a year contribution. Is that correct, Judd, from the schools?
Yes, the yeah, I believe that's correct.
Do we know what MPS is currently paying OU to use their facilities?
It was my understanding when we talked to them several years ago now that they were paying, that was about the amount they were spending for the program. I don't know if that's all going to OU or some of it goes to other places, but at the time it was Josiano and he he advised us that it would be kind of a wash for them in their budget. They would, they were already spending that and they would be able to continue to do it at this other facility.
Okay.
I don't know how it breaks down, but that was the total.
But as far as a formalized agreement with MPS, we haven't really crossed that bridge yet, I'm assuming.
We have not.
Okay. Okay. The architectural review board already has a representative, you said, from UTC or UMP on the board, correct?
We have a representative from UTC on the board.
Okay, so why does the seller then also have? A why do they also check the box on our on what we built?
They they are not required to approve it, but we will provide the plans to them primarily because as they develop the rest of the land, I think they're just interested in knowing what we're building, what it's going to look like, what what the site plan looks like, things like that.
Okay, so they it's basically just you'll provide us a courtesy copy. They don't have any standing to object?
No, no, UTC does not have to approve it.
Okay.
Get the information.
And will you talk to me about the bid district? Does the city of Norman have any other public facilities that are participants in a business improvement district?
No, we only have one business improvement district in Norman and it's University North Park Business Improvement District. And the way that that works, we had the assessments maybe at the last meeting, I think for the next year. And I said then we have two more years of assessments to go. It's a 10-year district and if it were to continue beyond that, it'd have to come back to council for adoption. The way it currently works is once a property is developed, meaning construction is finished and it gets assessed. So typically with the assessor's office, that's the year calendar year after it's constructed, then that gets put into the assessments and it could be subject to an assessment based on its taxable value.
Okay, and with how much does the city of Norman pay in taxes for their for city facilities?
We don't have city developed city facilities in our one bid district in this particular district, but based on the timing of when our project will be done, I believe this bid district will be done.
I guess my question is with the city being, you know, how does the city, the city hall pay ad liborum taxes?
No, no, the city doesn't pay ad liborum taxes. This is outside of ad liborum taxes and the city assesses it and collects it to pay for maintenance of our park in UMP.
So we would assess it ourselves and decide what we think that the building is worth and then?
We use the Cleveland County Assessor's valuation. And basically it's a pretty complicated spreadsheet, but it comes down to being a proportionate share of the overall development within UMP. And so whatever that proportion is, the each property owner pays their proportionate share of a $200,000 assessment. There's only two more years left, so by the time this property is constructed on the tax rolls and and put into the formula, I don't believe the bid district will still be in place.
Okay, I guess I'm just trying to understand, most of our buildings, if not all, are not on the tax rolls, correct?
Right, they they can still get assessed. You know, if you look up any city of Norman property, the assessor's office will at least have a valuation of the land typically. They don't always value the the constructed building. In the case of an assessment, we would have to ask them to come value the building.
Okay, so that I guess that's where I was going with it. Because we have land in the UMP already and we're not paying into the bid district on that property, correct?
Right, and it's not considered developed property, so it was not ever eligible for an assessment. So that particular issue has not come up with that property.
Okay. In the staff report you spoke to or who somebody did, the generous donation of the young family. And but I don't see how it translates to the contract, but I obviously admittedly didn't like go through it with a fine tooth comb. Does this put the young family on any sort of like how their money would be spent? I just want to make sure that we're not speaking for them.
No, the young family is very much involved in this project, but they are not part of this contract. The reason why I mentioned that in the memo is just because this is a really important first step to many to get us to the finish line of this project. We are meeting with the young family on a regular basis. You'll recall their original MOU was contingent on, the donation was contingent on the successful bond issue in August. But since that time, they've indicated that, you know, they really love the project. It's an important project to them and to the community and they want to participate regardless. And so we are continuing to engage with them and and they're very excited about this first step. But you'll have another agreement with with the Young Family Foundation that lays out the the terms of that donation more specifically in the next couple of months, I would say.
Okay. Can you explain to council what the difference is between a special warranty deed and a general warranty deed? And why this one is a special?
This is a special warranty deed primarily because of these these very specific covenants. You know, property next to the airport, because it was part of a naval base, all has these these flight path reservations and things like that. And so all of the deeds, as you see them in UMP, have typically been special warranty dues that contains very specific provisions about that flight path. We know we'll have to go get FAA approval for this building. You know, I don't anticipate that being an issue. Embassy Suites is certainly taller and they have paid approval, but it is a step we'll have to go through. And we luckily have a good working relationship with the airport representative to get that.
Okay, and can you talk to us about the restricted covenants that will apply to this to title?
Sure, the covenants, like I said, there's covenants related to the use of the airspace and the flight path. There are also covenants that have been in place since, I want to say, March of 2006 that we review regularly for other TIP related issues over the years. Those are the covenants that talk about the ARB, the Architectural Review Board. They they limit some of the development within UMP, things of that nature. There's there's primarily, I think, two sets of covenants that apply to this particular property. There are other covenants between particular buyers and sellers that would be in UMP. I think two that really impact this property.
So why was exhibit B blank?
Well, exhibit B is the title exceptions that we will get when we go through the title work. That's pretty typical. When we get the title work in, they will have a list of permitted exceptions. And once we have that, they will become part of the deed unless the seller opts to cure any of those things. If there are anything, if there's anything that could be here.
But I guess what I'm speaking to is if we already know what some of the restricted covenants are, why aren't they listed?
Well, that that will become part of the deed. We did list them in the agreement. I don't recall what section I can, but I do believe they are referenced specifically within the agreement.
This is almost over, cross. Do we have an appraisal?
No, we don't have an appraisal. We had agreed upon that price last year. I will tell you fairly recently when I was going through the bid assessment process and looking at all of the cells of property, there was property that sold just north of this side on the north side of Rock Creek Road for not quite double the price, but close per square foot.
For the land?
Just vacant land, yeah.
That makes you feel a little better about it. Okay, so the closing costs? It looks like the taxpayer is paying all of the closing costs. Is that correct?
Yes, and that is not atypical in a commercial transaction. You would not see that probably in a residential transaction, but it's not, it's not unusual in a
Okay, so don't don't come in here, please. So my son just came in here. So, okay, I understand that there are all kinds of different ways that commercial property, residential property, any kind of property is negotiated, but ultimately there's going to be a healthy dose of closing costs. And so I'm wondering if we had this conversation at all about, you know, negotiating with the sellers and if we are going to have the taxpayer pick up the closing cost bill in its entirety, is that also coming out of the TIP funds?
It could. I mean, it'll all be part of the project budget. So the construction supplement, the land purchase funds, those are all going to become part of the project budget in addition to the 22 and a half million dollars in Norman. Uh, in addition to the 22 and a half million dollars in Norman forward funding and the, uh, Trey Young Foundation contribution. Uh, so it would come out of there. I've got a pretty preliminary estimate on those costs. It's not as high as you might, think, you know, five, probably five to $6,000. We obviously don't have a, a realtor fee or anything like, any commissions or anything like that here. Um, and that's typically, um, a chunk of, of a, of a purchase price like this.
You have a initial estimate from the title company on, or?
I have looked at, uh, title company, at a title company website here in Norman and, and worked at some estimates based on the information they have. It's all purchase price based generally.
Okay, um, and, I think, I'm probably gonna remember some in a little bit, so I might need to raise my hand again, but I'm gonna pass it on for now. Thank you so much for willing to answer some questions.
Councilmember Hallman?
Appreciate those questions. I had some of the same ones written down here. And I did, uh, I appreciate it being brought off consent too, so we could get some clarification about some of this stuff. Primarily to what would be the, one, just to go back to that last point, the closing cost, what did, Catherine, did you say that you think the closing cost is gonna be on this? Did you say six?
Yeah, my estimate is, um, is probably title work and all of that is gonna be around $5,000. And then closing fees and, and things like that will be around $1,000 to $1,500.
Okay, thank you. And then I was kinda wondering too, should this be approved tonight? You know, what would be the next, what further action would the city council be involved in as far as, before this project would actually get underway? Um, and then some of the questions about, uh, contracts, shared parking and things like that. Um, those discussions would still go on and the council would still be making decisions about this in the future. Is that what I understood?
Yes, and you'll also have, uh, the operator agreement. You'll have the plat, uh, that'll come forward. So, I, you know, there's a number of steps to this process. This is really just the first one for us, but, you'll have, uh, multiple opportunities to kinda see this as it progresses along through our required approval process.
Okay, and the, uh, definitely interested in knowing more about the mineral, mineral rights, um, question. That was definitely interesting. I, based on my understanding of the development, any kind of commercial development that would take place in the future would face 24th Avenue. And our Norman Forward projects would be to the east. And the road that we're building to service it would run in front of our building and connect to Rock Creek. And that would be between the back of the future commercial. Is that the way I understand it?
Yeah, essentially the design, um, creates parcels to the south of that road, or I'm sorry, to the east of that road and to the west of, west of the road and our site. Uh, but we don't know where those parcel lines will be yet, so, um, yes, typically the retail's gonna face 24th Avenue, but that's not to say there's not some creative design out there that could be done. If it's a, you know, an Adidas store connected with the Trey Young brand or something like that. You know, that'll be up to, to the tenant and maybe purchaser of future parcels.
Okay, I definitely would like to explore the recruitment. If we build the connection road and then in the future development comes in and they wanna connect on or, face our, our road that we built and not 24th or whatever. Um, I would be interested in that, you know, depending on if it's 20 years from now, maybe not, since that's the general term of our recruitment stuff. Uh, but, um, I wouldn't anticipate it would be that long, but, uh, but I would be interested if we build this, you know, road that connects Rock Creek, over to the, basically to the parking lot of the Embassy Suites and has our buildings there. If a future commercial development wanted to face our street and connect to it with driveways, I would definitely be interested in being able to maybe recoup some of the costs that we incurred by building that road from them. I think that's.
Points there, and we are not very typically developers. Um, but I think typically in a transaction like this where you're the first one moving, uh, it's up to that person to get that, that party, to get that property ready, uh, for construction of their project. Um, so typically it would not be unusual for that particular project to be the ones that lay out the watering sewer lines to get to their property, the roadways, things like that. And so that's typically just considered a cost of development. Um, we're, we've talked about it with Public Works, uh, talked about it in a meeting on Monday. Um, and, and we'll have cost estimates on, on what that's going to cost us, but, all of our Norman Forward projects, uh, that have required access, uh, anticipated some level of traffic and roadway improvements, uh, including previous locations for this project. Um, we, we knew we would have to put in roadway improvements to benefit our project.
Thank you, and, um, I definitely agree with less, um, the minimum parking for our projects. I'd rather have less and, you know, have the option to go add more later if we really had to, but not put too much in, because then, you know, a little bit hard to remove it and then come back later and put some more if we needed it. But, uh, yeah, being real conscious of how much concrete we're pouring out there, I think is a really good example to set with our own projects. Since we're trying to encourage, um, you know, private developers to do that. The design standards, that is, um, you know, always been an interesting topic in the U N P area. Uh, a lot of folks, uh, will identify the academy as not looking like the rest of the buildings in the area. And wondering how that got through, um, any kind of approval. So I would hope for not, maybe not too much pushback on our design. I think ours looks pretty good and would fit in, at least the preliminary concept we've seen, that would fit in well with this area. And I, I would expect that would be our intentions to, build something that fits in with this area and the, the architecture, so, um, the, let's see, the N P S cost, I had recalled that that was about us ending the U N, the tax increment and trying to make Norman Public Schools whole.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's the 350, is that what I, am I recalling that correctly?
Yeah, and I think that was suggested maybe by former council member Castleberry, uh, because there is an abhorrent impact to a school district whenever a, TIF ends. And so this was sort of the estimate of that impact. Uh, we couldn't just cut them a check. Um, so this was something that ended up being negotiated, not really asked for by the school districts, but something that was negotiated to kind of provide them some, some cushion, uh, as this project moves forward, uh, because of that impact.
Yes, I recall Councilor Hickman as well, I think, uh, being a big proponent of that, making them whole, um, since we were cutting the increment out, so. Uh, I don't, I never had a real strong feeling about that, really, um, but we, as a council, did make that decision, so. Just want some further clarification on that. I think that, uh, Councilman Patron asked and got answered several of my questions already. Those were the additional ones I had, so, thank you.
Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, I just wanna say, uh, thank you to Councilmember Patron for, um, asking to take it off the consent agenda because I had questions as well. Um, I've been sitting here just marking Xs through all of the things that, um, have already been covered so that we don't have to, um, go over any territory that we've already covered, but, um, I, I just wanted to make sure that, understood the site plan and, um, we've spoken about, uh, something that needs to come that is not resolved yet, which is the parking agreement with Embassy Suites. So, on the site plan, it looks like there's entrance to the facility from Rock Creek and from the Embassy Suite parking lot. Does that mean the other? So there's two different points of access to the facility?
Yeah, that's correct. We would, we would be connecting to the Embassy Suites parking lot on the south side of the site.
Okay, um, but that would be, um, another access point from 24th to get to the facility, I guess, is what I'm asking. Besides, like, the only, there would be another entrance besides from Rock Creek Road through the Embassy Suite parking lot?
If you came through the Embassy Suites parking lot, yes.
Okay, okay, just to make sure I understand that. And so we are working on, um, a parking agreement, is what I heard you say. And so are we confident that that's going to move forward without any kind of issue or complication?
We are, uh, we are. Every indication that, that, we just have talked to them just last week, um, most recently, and they're totally interested.
Okay, which, um, leads back to full circle about, um, I also would, you know, like to jump on the bandwagon of, um, less parking, the better, especially if we have, um, a shared parking agreement. I think there are quite a few of us on council right now that are all about shared parking, so, um, anything that we can move along in that area would be great. Um, let's see, the other thing I wanted to ask about, because I know this has been, um, something that we've discussed, is, um, the importance of having to change the, um, date of, um, when we start construction. And so we've changed it to August of, um, 2021. And I just wanted to also get some kind of, um, assessment of, is that a reasonable date as far as you're concerned? Um, is there, I mean, we've had, 2020 has been a little challenging with lots of surprises and, um, I just wanna make sure that we have an ample, um, as long as we have to renegotiate the date, that you're comfortable with that August 21, 2021 date, that, um, we can achieve that without any, uh, pressure on our part.
Yes, and that's, that comes from, um, the, the lead consultant, F S B. Um, their estimate is about nine months to finish the, uh, construction documents and, and be out to bid. So that takes.
Okay, um, let's see, so let's go to that one. Um, okay, just on, uh, contract, just, a couple of things that caught my attention, um, because I don't normally read, uh, contracts for, you know, commercial development in this detail. So on, on page two, under the agreements, number two, where it says the purchase price, um, it says of the 12-acre land, the buyer remains committed to donating two acres. Aren't we the buyer?
That's a typo. It should say seller. That's good catch.
Okay, okay, I just was, that just really caught my attention, because I was like, no, we're not, we're not donating the land. Okay, great, then. Okay, and then the other thing that caught my attention, probably because it's in caps and bold, is on page five where, um, uh, it says, uh, that the, purchasing the land as of the closing date is as is and where is conditioned with all faults. That just got my attention, so is that just a normal contract language? Is it normally in caps and bold? Is there something that's, we know about that? Is there something we should know about?
No, I don't think, uh, that was put in there at the request of the seller. I don't think, uh, it's, it's an indication that there's anything they know about the land that we don't. Uh, but it is an indication that we need to do our due diligence and do our inspections as we would anyway. Uh, to make sure we know much, as much about this property as, as, uh, we can possibly know before we close on the purchase of it.
Okay, and then how, and so how do we go about doing that?
So, um, after this agreement is approved, we will have, uh, our architects out there, we will have a survey done, we'll start doing our inspections to identify if, if there's anything, um, out there we need to be aware of. Um, we will also, through the title work, uh, we could find out additional things about the land there. Uh, although I don't anticipate anything surprising, um, we will just, that's the process we will be going through in the next 30 to 60 days to try and identify anything at all, uh, that might be occurring with the land that we don't already know about.
Okay, so that would all take place before closing, so if there was some kind of discovery, we could, manage that before closing. Okay. Um, and then the other, the other piece, uh, that I just wanted to make sure, because I, I think there's language in the contract, but, um, it's also caught my attention about having to build the road on property that we don't own to have access to the facility, so, we've covered all our bases there. I'm assuming of any kind of easement or, um, anything else to go ahead with the, um, construction of that access road.
Yes, uh, UTC has agreed to donate any right of way or easements that we need, uh, for any utility or roadway work for our project.
Okay, okay, I think that's all the questions that I have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Peacock?
Thanks, uh, yeah, so this has already been touched on several times, but, um, I'm really interested in finding ways that we can reduce, uh, our reliance on the car here in Norman. So, uh, in that vein, where would a bus stop be located on this site plan? Would that be at Rock Creek, or is there?
We have talked about bus parking or, or bus drop-off on the north, uh, north of the building. It's not delineated yet, because we haven't gotten to that detail of the site plan, but that would be the location right off Rock Creek.
So would there be a sidewalk from, uh, Rock Creek to the facility?
Uh, it's a good question. I would presume that we, there would be a sidewalk adjacent to the, to the entry road.
I just, I can't tell from the site, but, site plan, but it doesn't look like there's enough, uh, width and that roadway easement to incorporate a sidewalk, so I just wanted to point that out and make sure everybody was aware of it.
Yeah, that's something we'll have to work out when we develop the final legal description for that easement.
Thank you.
Councilmember Patron?
Um, to a lifelong Norman resident, uh, just brought to my attention a little while ago that, um, that there used to be a producing well right in that area, if not in this exact parcel area. So that is really interesting. Is that news to you, Ms. Walker?
No, there, there was a well further north. Uh, that's the only well I've ever known of on this property east of 24th, and that was recently closed, I believe, within the last six months.
Within the last time?
Six months.
Okay, was it actually capped, closed?
Yes.
Okay. About the mineral rights at, for that well?
Uh, that was the O U Foundation.
Okay.
That had, uh, they had a, they may have had a lease at some point. I'm not really sure who operated the well, uh, but they had the mineral rights and they worked out getting that closed, I believe.
Was it the old school kind of, like, Derek, or was it fracked?
It's very, it's, I, I don't know, I shouldn't say, because I, I don't know for sure. I know it was an older well that had not been used for quite some time, so I don't believe it was a fracking well. Uh, but I know that that's been an issue as they've sold property on the north half of U N P. And, uh, I just happened to have a conversation with the, the attorney representing them, and he was excited about getting that closed out.
Okay, so I'm gonna take a wild guess that that's probably what the environmental language is all about, because they go much further in this on environmental language than most commercial contracts on land that you're gonna see, so. There's something there. I don't know if it's the fact it was military and, ammunition testing or something, but it sounds to me like it's probably, the, so what all are we gonna be looking for when we do our environmental review?
In this. If, if you do, like a phase one assessment, uh, they're going to be looking on the vacant parcel. I think they'll be looking, focus more on, on the property records, you know, whether there were pipelines or mineral rights that were accessed through there, things like that. And they may also do some type of soil testing, things like that. Most of, most of the phase one environmentals I've been involved with have been on actual physical property we've bought, uh, so asbestos and things like that. So obviously that's not an issue here on vacant land, but they would be looking at all of those issues. I know they go and do a pretty thorough check of, of any easements or anything that might have impacted the land that would have followed the record as well.
Okay, and it would also be that if, if it's the O U Foundation that owns the mineral rights. or whoever they've leased it out to, we, I think we need to know the answers to all of this because if they, whoever has the lease right now was to decide that they in fact do want to frac it, that is loud, really loud, um, and a lot of lights. So I, I just want to make sure that we understand what's going on with that. Just from a real estate perspective, um, from being in this profession, I would really be much more comfortable if we had the, um, if we were identifying these parcels with specificity in the contract. I mean, I, it's, this is really not typical at all. So it, it not even, I mean, I realize there's probably not an address, or maybe there is in the flat, I don't know, but, um, at a minimum, you'd usually get some, you know, an address. Um, so it seems like that we kind of don't know the answers to some stuff, but we're putting a contract together anyway, and it feels like it might be a little bit premature, not that I'm against doing this, like, because I'm not, I mean, I, I just don't know why it's, we have so many blanks. Um, I definitely feel like that I'd like for recruitment ordinance to be passing in tandem. Um, because you, you said it best, and even now we're talking about potential recruitment on sidewalks as well. Um, we aren't developers, and so it, I feel like that there's already enough, um, controversial, um, issues that happen with the UMP already. I certainly don't want to be, want the public to feel like that we're now paying for the roads and sidewalks and infrastructure for the new stores that are gonna come in right behind us because there's a new gem. So, um, I would prefer, um, giving this a couple of weeks that you need to get the, um, site in there and the recruitment ordinance going. That's my personal preference, if I may be alone in that one, but, um, I just like clean real estate contracts, so, anyway. And the mineral right thing, I'd like to know the answer to that as well.
Councilmember Bierman?
Um, so Councilmember Petron kind of teed that up pretty nicely for me. Um, I wanted to kind of bring this up to the 10,000 foot view and ask why the rush? Why haven't we had an executive session about the details of this? That's typically how things go, and seeing this in at least somewhat polished form, I, you know, I'm a little surprised that we haven't, because I feel like, I feel like some of these things could have been brought up in executive session, and then we wouldn't be here trying to hammer all of these things out right before an expectation of voting on this. Because at this point, I don't want to vote for it either way, because I want to give it a fair shot. I want all these details to be put into place. Um, and I don't want to vote no for just that reason, but I don't, I don't want to fall into the same trap that we've fallen into before. Um, I mean, I hate to say it because something like heaven forbid the Embassy Suites should sell. We don't even have an MOU really to point to of an expectation of a parking agreement. And so, you know, we've kind of come into this, this trap before with, you know, the handshake and the conversations that are going well, but no final agreement. So, you know, I, I'd like to know why we're at this point without having an executive session first. Not that I don't mind talking about these things publicly, but I feel like it would be easier to get some answers to these questions if we had identified them ahead of time.
Uh, Mrs. Walker, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, based, my understanding is these deal points were negotiated in advance. So we knew 10 acres we would purchase at a price that was predetermined. Two acres we get for free with the deal. Um, so, yeah, that was, that's why you're seeing it in this form and format, and that's why you were seeing it on the consent calendar. There, um, there weren't a lot of deal points to negotiate in the real property transaction on this side. Um, we'll get to shape the corners if we need to move a corner, uh, up or down based on final construction drawings. Um, but that's, that's why you're seeing it, um, here tonight. It's, it's a step of about 100 more steps we'll need to take before we bring you, uh, contracts to award for construction.
Yeah, usually when we've had executive sessions on purchases, it's oftentimes unfortunately in the context of condemnations, and it's all about the price and the negotiation of that. And so since this was already negotiated last year, uh, we brought the contract forward as a matter of course.
And I mean, and I, I can't, I can't understand that, and I cer- I certainly understand why it's happened this way. But, you know, I mean, in contrast to what we went through with the North Base acquisition, I mean, we had multiple, multiple executive sessions to talk through details, and I feel like some of these things are kind of part and parcel to the purchase. And we, we, as Councilmember Petron has said, who has a certainly far more experience with commercial real estate acquisition and sale than I do, is that there are details in this contract that really should be in there. Um, latitude and longitude, if not an address, yeah, I mean, I feel like, I feel like we do have some things that are missing, and I, I am very concerned about the road and having recruitment in place before we let the ink dry on a contract for this, for the particular parcel that it looks like we're purchasing. Um, because that can have a pretty significant impact on what we're able to build. And, you know, I, I just feel like those are things that, at least having further direction than what we've got so far, it would certainly make me feel more comfortable with what we're looking at paying for this, for this parcel. That's where I'm at.
Seeing no other comments, Mayor.
All right, thank you for all of that great discussion. Um, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comment, correct, Madam Clerk?
It would be correct. Um, I will give it a minute or two to see if I get an email. There is no public here in the building. Seeing none, Mayor. It looks like Councilwoman Petron has her hand up again.
Okay, this is an opportunity for council to make final comments regarding this item. Councilwoman Petron.
Um, on the proposed schedule, I know we have executive session tonight over executive session-y stuff. Um, when is our, do we have one coming up on the next council meeting?
No, there's nothing scheduled for executive session at this point. Your next council meeting is going to be pretty long. We have about six second reading ordinances, two of which are controversial.
Um, okay, when, that's the 17th?
No, that's the 24th.
Okay, and then what's the, the date for the following one after that?
The council meeting? Well, that would be your one meeting in December.
Okay, uh, I'd like to make for executive session on the meeting of December, whatever that one is. The one that we have in December, so that we can, and in the meantime, get the recruitment ball rolling, because we could have first reading for the recruitment ordinance on the next council meeting, and that way we have this book of, that makes people more comfortable, I guess, is what I'm trying to put these details together where we have the specificity of this contract.
Recruitments are adopted by resolution, so it wouldn't need two readings.
Oh, good, that's helpful.
Recruitments are also, I was trying to find the code provision, uh, I couldn't look at it while I was, while I was considering, but they are only for arterial roads. What we're talking about here is not an arterial road. It's just an access road to our property. Uh, so it's wouldn't actually be eligible for recruitment under our ordinance.
So it wouldn't need to. Okay.
It would not be eligible.
Yeah, under our ordinance cur- currently, right, but they've given us easement to put our road through. I mean, they're even speaking to it in the contract themselves, knowing that they're gonna benefit from the road. So I'm trying, what I'm trying to do is make the taxpayers' money go as far as it possibly can, and that is a major expenditure.
I do not think they will agree to that.
You don't think they'll agree to paying for their portion of the road?
No, this was something that, that we talked about early on, um, trying to, to split a bunch of costs to buy the entire parcel. Um, as I said, when you develop property, it's very common to, if you're the first one to develop it, you bear the cost of, of making your property, uh, buildable and workable. And so that is what you see here. I do not know that they would agree to, uh, pay for a road that benefits our property right now.
Okay, well, it sounds to me like that this would probably be a good discussion for executive session, even more so then. Um, so I'm gonna make a motion to postpone this for executive session for the meeting in December. Can I get a second?
A second.
This is an opportunity for members of council to ask questions regarding the motion to postpone. Are there any questions from council?
Seeing none.
Are there any comments from the public regarding the motion to postpone?
Seeing none.
This is an opportunity for council to make final comments regarding the motion to postpone.
Councilmember Holman?
Uh, yeah, just to clarify, um, this is postponed for an executive session in December. What date would this be on for council vote, and how does that impact, um, the timeline that Judd just talked about?
You could have it on the same meeting if you do your executive session at the pre-meeting.
Okay, and the timeline?
Judd, I'll let you answer that.
Well, obviously, everything just gets pushed back, but I'm concerned that if we don't move forward and make progress, we, we run a chance of losing our investor, our, our donor.
And, okay. Catherine, if you might, how exactly would the developer benefit from our access road? Their buildings wouldn't even be facing it. It, their, their buildings would be facing 24th Avenue. How would they benefit from our little access road that connects to the Embassy Suites?
Can I respond to that, Mayor, and Council, like, uh, Catherine may want to weigh in as well, but I think you just said it, Councilmember, I wanted to mention that earlier. The way this site plan is currently designed, this really isn't even a public road. It really is a, a private, private driveway or a quasi-public driveway going to a public facility. But, um, as Catherine mentioned, we've only done recruitment districts for arterial, usually multi-lane arterial roadways, like the one we're building in, in Ward One today, uh, 24th Avenue Southeast. That has a recruitment, uh, uh, resolution attached to it. But, but your point is right on, Councilwoman. Uh, a- any recruitment process has as its foundation the question of benefits. Why would someone pay for a road if they're not benefiting from it? And the way the site plan is currently designed, you're correct, that those other parcels along, uh, that are currently unplanted along 24th Avenue will not benefit from this current driveway into the, uh, multi-sport aquatic center.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, that was kind of the impression I have had by looking at the site plans is, um, if they were to benefit by, by this road, that means their buildings would, the back of their buildings would be facing 24th, which is the main arterial road, and I don't think they're gonna want to do that. So, I mean, in those cases, a recruitment on 24th Avenue would probably be more appropriate, but the street has been four lanes for over 20 years. So I don't know if that would even apply either. So, um, that would be my comments. Thanks.
Councilmember Carter?
Um, I won't be supporting postponement for a lot of reasons. Um, I think it's been said time and time again, what Mr. Foster, uh, has said is that there is a lot of discontent with this council's inability to make a decision and move forward. Uh, not only from the people that are donating, um, potentially donating their resources to this project, but also the citizens oversight committees that have, uh, selected this site. Uh, the numerous hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of, uh, emails and phone calls and people, um, that have reached out to us to move forward. I think one of the criticisms this council has received time and time again is this inability to move forward and be paralyzed. I think Councilmember Hickman said it best, uh, you know, when he talked about, um, decision paralysis. And so, um, you know, these, these details that you're wanting to discuss in, uh, executive session were details that were, uh, hammered out a year ago, you know? And, um, we can't go changing agreements now that we made a year ago. And so I feel like, um, um, we need to move forward this project. We need to show the citizens of this city that, that we, uh, can make a decision, and we can stick to our word, and we can move forward.
Councilmember Foreman?
I would just say, uh, my experience being on council is quite the opposite. I think one of the biggest criticisms that we have is moving forward on things and making decisions without having all of our ducks in a row. So I'll be supporting the postponement on this.
Seeing no other council comments, Mayor?
Thank you. I will agree with Councilmember Carter. This is not a new project. This is not a new issue. This is something that we are trying to kill. And I'm so tired of being our own worst enemy. We're about to celebrate a ribbon cutting of a Norman Ford project this Saturday, yet for some reason, we just refuse to move forward on this one, and Norman residents deserve better. I will certainly not be supporting a motion to postpone. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Motion on the floor is to postpone the item until December 8th, at which time an executive session could also take place. Councilmember Bierman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
No.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
No.
Mayor Clark?
No.
The motion passes by a vote of six to three, voting against Councilmember Carter, Councilmember Peacock, Mayor Clark.
This will be one of those meetings that people will bring up for a long time. On to item 31, ordinance 2021 dash 21 upon first reading, second, and final reading to extend the previously adopted sunset date related to COVID-19 regulations regarding the wearing of masks from November 30th, 2020 to March 1st, 2021, and declaring an emergency. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on first reading by title only.
Motion.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on first reading by title only. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Petron?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Nash?
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yes.
Councilman, uh, Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Moved.
Second.
I'd like to recognize Catherine Walker to make a presentation.
This will be really brief. The only change to this ordinance is to extend the sunset date to March 1st, uh, 2021. Uh, in the initial draft, we included language that, that referenced the mayor's emergency proclamations, but, uh, to this point, councils acted on this ordinance three times already. So now it, it just reads that unless council repeals or modifies it through a subsequent ordinance, it will expire on March 1st. Um, I went into quite a bit of detail in the memo about where we were with COVID in terms of our statistics in Norman and the nation and statewide, obviously. Obviously, you all heard at 5 o'clock the situation we find ourselves in with hospital capacity and things like that. I also went into detail about the vaccine tracker, which there's been a lot of information just the last couple of days about this, but obviously, that's not going to be a fix for some time. So March 1st seems like a good time to look at this again and kind of see where we are at that point and whether or not you all want to move forward with extending it at that time or doing something different. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Biermann?
Catherine, it's not really a question, but I wanted to thank you for putting a lot of detail in the staff report. As we've seen, when we try and go back and sometimes look at why past councils have done certain things, there's not a whole lot of information there. I doubt this will be the last pandemic, and I think knowing kind of what are, what the data points are that we're looking at is really important to have in the staff reports because we won't necessarily have access to that news nearly as quickly, however long down the road it is. So I just wanted to thank you for that. I definitely think we need to extend it, and I think showing the footprints for future councils is really helpful. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. Just to clarify for the people watching, the date of March 1st, what in particular was the reason for that? And then, as before, the council still has the ability to reevaluate at any time. And if things all of a sudden got way better in a month, we could, we could go back and reduce. If it got way worse, we could expand. That's still the case. Council still can change it anytime if we wanted to.
That's absolutely correct. And as I said, March 1st, you know, you don't want to go too far out because the data changes daily, hourly. So March 1st seemed like a good date to reassess again, especially given all of the progress being made with the vaccines. There are quite a few that the U.S. has contracts for vaccines from companies that are in phase three development. And if those continue without a hitch, you know, maybe we'll be looking at something a little more optimistic in March, but we'll at least have a better sense of the timeline.
Thank you. I appreciate that information.
I'm seeing no other council comments, mayor?
Thank you. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments? Is that a no?
My apologies, I was muted. I'm seeing no, okay, wait a minute, I waited long enough that I have one now. This is from Paul Wilson, and he states, "I'm very concerned. Citizen in Norman, a few weeks ago, I had entered the super target here in Norman and of course was wearing my mask. However, the family behind me were not wearing masks. Now Target had a security person at the door handling, handing out free disposable masks. However, the family basically said, 'No, thank you,' and continued to enter the store. And I was a little concerned that that person at the door did nothing to stop these customers from entering. I went about my shopping, but later witnessed these same people still not wearing masks. I proceeded to ask an employee why they were not enforcing the mandate, and in a nutshell, this person responded by saying, 'There is nothing they can do to enforce it,' and it was company policy to chase, and it was not company policy to chase them down. I finally, and I finally, and I find this is highly unacceptable. I have contacted the city as well as Target corporate office about this. Today, I attempted to enter not wearing a mask, and they did not attempt to stop me. However, once I got out of the sight of the door, I did put my mask on to follow the mandate. So how is the city going to make sure the businesses are held accountable to enforce the mandate? Because obviously, the threat of fines has no effect." And that is the only, but one more, one more, hang on. This is from Laurie Scott, Ward 6. Why are we extending the mask mandate when we have had a mask mandate enforced but yet have rising cases in Norman? And that is all the comments, mayor?
Thank you. Are there any final comments from council regarding this item?
Councilmember Holman, did you have a comment?
Yes. Just wanted to say that I wish we did not need to do this. I do not like doing this at all. I don't like having these reductions in capacities. I don't like mandating masks. I wish we did not need to use the power of the government to put a mandate in place that we could just ask people to do it nicely, and they would, for the betterment of their neighbors and all those types of things. What we've been doing and the policies we've had to put in place in response to COVID is definitely hurting our local economy. Sales tax reliant, it's hurting businesses, it's hurting people. We all know that. Some of us are having to deal with it in our own jobs and daily lives. So I just want to make clear that in my perspective, I don't think anybody on this city council likes this or wants to do this, and it is impacting all of us personally, these regulations. And I just want to be clear about that because even though I have those feelings about having to do this, the, I'm not a doctor, obviously, and the people that are experts in this, some would say, "Well, there's no experts in COVID. It's too new." Well, an infectious disease doctor who's been doing it their entire life is an expert in infectious disease. They'd be an expert in this, I think, too, at least compared to my knowledge of it. And when all of these folks that we hear from are telling us the same thing, that this is serious, it's real, it's getting worse, but in places like Norman where we have put in mask mandates, we are getting better compliance than places that don't have any kind of guidelines set by their local officials. And I think our growth, from what we saw earlier, our rates are less than what we're seeing in these smaller towns and these small counties that are in rural areas. So based on the evidence I've seen and the testimony of people that I believe to be experts in these fields, our policies have worked. They're not stopping this. They're not turning it around, but they're slowing it down and slowing the spread so that we don't overwhelm our medical facilities like we are seeing in other places is really the goal here. We know that wearing a mask is not a savior, just the be-all, end-all savior of COVID-19, and then if you wear one, that's it, you don't have anything to worry about. We know that's not true, but we know that it helps slow this down, the spread of this, and can help our medical professionals and facilities better be able to handle and deal with this. So anyway, that's how I feel about it. I don't want to do this. I don't want to keep doing this. The thought of having to extend this further is just terrifying and uncomfortable, but based on all the information this council has been given, I'm seeing the same information that my colleagues see and that was presented to us in this meeting that anybody can look at on, you know, replay if you're interested. Based on all that, it seems to me that this is the right thing to do at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Biermann?
I think Councilmember Holman said it perfectly. This is the right thing to do, but it is not a fun thing to do. Masks are mitigation tools. They are not cures. And I do agree that anyone can go and should watch the conference session ahead of time and actually see some real numbers cited about the impact that masks have, a 21% increase in spread versus an 88% increase in spread. But I would like pursuant to some of the public comments we got, I would like to ask Chief Foster about enforcement and what we're doing to ensure that people are wearing masks and that we are supporting businesses that, you know, really maybe don't have the ability or feel safe enforcing masks because it is on all of us, but that also includes our police department. And I get messages and I'm tagged in posts almost daily, it seems, from people who are frustrated by the city's lack of ability to enforce our mask mandate, including, you know, at places like the soccer fields and just like we heard from, you know, about indoor volleyball. So what are we doing to not just educate, but also enforce? We're eight months into this pandemic. If everyone doesn't understand by now what the city's mandate is, then they, then they're never going to understand it. But at some point, we have to, we have to actually start enforcing this because our healers at Norman Regional can't take much more of what we're doing right now, and we need to protect them as well.
Yes, we were responding, and, you know, it was even difficult here on the mask and how people feel about that. And we, as you said, we really try to educate and encourage people to do the right thing. Anytime anybody calls us about anybody not wearing a mask, we'll respond to the, whatever call it is. It's hard when you go to a soccer field and there's 300 people not wearing a mask to start picking and choosing who you're going to write the ticket to first before the others disperse. And we don't like to do that. We'd like for people to be compliant or for it to be enforced as people enter the field. It just makes it tough when we're picking and choosing who we're going to enforce it against and who we're not. But we will respond. We will take appropriate action as needed to make sure people are wearing it because obviously it is affecting not just the general public, but when we look at it, as has been mentioned before, police officers in general are dying from COVID-19 while out here doing their job. So encouraging people to do this and making sure we can push it as much as possible is what we'll do from our side.
Thanks, Chief. And I know that, I know that officers are pretty well-versed at deciding what infraction to enforce and when. I'm sure that, you know, see all kinds of minor traffic violations all the time, and you have to pick and choose which ones you're going to address and which ones you aren't. But we are headed into a period of this pandemic that we have not experienced before. And, you know, I feel like everyone needs to step up, to step up efforts, and I would love for the public to be able to do that on their own, but, you know, fines can be motivating. And, you know, just because 50 people disperse, they might be dispersing to go and actually put on their masks, which might actually serve a better purpose by ticketing one person than, you know, just trying to educate everyone. So I really would like to see some increased enforcement of it. I feel like, I feel like it's time. And that also includes employees at businesses because I have also, I have also received a few of those calls. It's not just people walking in and impacting employees, but it's also employees who are not properly wearing their masks or their PPE as well. So I think there needs to be enforcement on both ends, but while I agree with Councilmember Holman, I don't like doing this, I feel like we absolutely have to.
Councilmember Carter?
Well, I believe this is absolutely necessary for a lot of reasons. I think the first is if we're going to get our economy going, we have to control the virus, and wearing masks is the most effective way without a vaccine to do that. When I do surgery, I wear a mask in surgery. I don't wear it to protect myself. I wear it to protect my patient, and that's why we wear masks, is to protect the other person. And so, like we heard tonight, cities with mask ordinances have a lower rate of infectivity than cities without a mask ordinance. And so I really feel like it's important for Norman to lead the way like we have been for the state of Oklahoma. I think it would be nice for the state of Oklahoma to step up and follow through with that because we know that Norman is a regional destination for a lot of small towns in the area, and that serves as a source of infectivity for our residents. And the last reason is a personal reason. My Aunt Nadine Carter, 92 years old, died last week of COVID. She was an RN, worked at Baptist Hospital for 50 years, lived up there by Baptist, and spent a majority of her time in the transplant unit, and she was tough as nails, and she was meaner than snot. She raised me for a couple of years, and we definitely had a love-hate relationship, but she positively impacted my life in ways that I discover all the time. And so my uncle, Uncle Homer, passed away about 10 years ago, and Aunt Nadine was still living, you know, on her own. She had recently sold her house by Baptist and moved out by one of her children, one of my cousins, in Choctaw, and was living in an assisted living, but taking care of herself and doing all of that. She came down with COVID, and when faced with the reality of having to go to the hospital and knowing the details of ventilation and all of that, she chose to not do that. And she went into hospice, didn't eat for six days, and died last Saturday. So if the state of Oklahoma, I think, would have had a more aggressive mask mandate, the studies I've seen is that if we would have had mask mandates with 70% compliance, we would have cut the number of deaths roughly in half. So I'm glad that Norman's leading the way here, and so I'm voting for this tonight for Aunt Nadine.
Councilmember Nash?
I think that, you know, people shouldn't be so wrapped into the numbers of people dying, looking for some threshold as though there's some acceptable number of died to make, not having to wear a mask, a decent trade-off. That it's, it's awful. Now, you know, this, this crisis has just, it's been a cancer in our country, in our city. What it lacks in lethality, it makes up for in its destruction of our core values and our stability. And it is indeed laying siege to our humanity. There's so much apprehension above us to encourage people to wear masks, and there's so much apprehension among us to wear masks. And the governance above us is abandoning us, and the people among us are just disconnecting from us. The degeneration of our values is highlighted by this fact that we have to be reminded that we care about each other. You know, we, we cared about each other as recently as four months ago. Yeah, it feels like a lifetime ago, but as some may recall, over the summer, there were tens of thousands of Normanites that saw a problem. They put themselves to the side. They migrated out in the summer heat to inform their fellow Normanites of the problem they perceived. Yeah, they, they gave a damn about the people in this city. Tens of thousands of other people saw a problem with the interpretation of that group. They put themselves to the side to inform their fellow Normanites of the problem that they perceived in the interpretation of that first group. Yeah, emotions were high on both sides as they strived to communicate the problems that they saw to each other. You know, we didn't try to kill each other, and we didn't abandon each other to suffer our fates, the problems that we saw. We held our ground and fought to save each other. You know, because we are good people, and we care about each other, we are important to each other. But it's like we're forgetting how important we are to each other in lockstep with the rise in, in COVID cases. Yeah, this, this virus is destroying who we are. The physical death is getting all the attention, but our moral death is what will be our downfall. You know, for me personally, you know, I don't know how to do a decent picture. My son has, it looks like I went to space. So my son, we don't know what's wrong with his immune system. Back in March, he got a little adenovirus. We thought we were going to lose him. He, he just, he's completely swallowed up. So he actually, they escorted him into the emergency center in the back because So he actually, they escorted him into the emergency center in the back because it looked like he had measles. I don't know. We do know his, his immune system is shot. So we choose not to, you know, even though the lockdown has lifted, we still live our lives locked down. Because if we bring this home, our oldest son is probably not going to survive it. And now my wife and our, and our youngest daughter that she's growing, we don't want to deal with that monster either. And there's a lot of people who are looking at this as though they think that it only affects them. They're not afraid of the virus and they're forgetting that these people that we live with, these are the people that matter, you know, whether we live with them or whether they're just neighbors. You know, the people thinking this has anything to do with their freedoms. You know, they're just angrily swimming to the bottom of pool because they're drowning. Yeah, this mask mandate has the claws of a kitten. Doesn't have the power to really enforce a lot. But this mandate, in my opinion, it's not here to take away our freedom to kill each other's loved ones any more than speed limits are in, in school zones. You know, we don't have to be told to preserve each other. This mask mandate is because I still walk from my car to the entrance of a store. And then I have to walk back to my car because I forgot my damn mask. And it's because sometimes I just don't, you know, I'm fed up with this crap. And I'd rather catch it and die and live with the situation anymore. Because I'm tired and need to rule, you know, need a rule to prevent me from doing anything stupid. Because sometimes I just don't feel like wearing pants, but I do because, you know, I, I need a voice of reason to tell me to. Yeah, this, this is our march up the Marine Corps boot camp. You go through the crucible at the end and then you go up this reaper and mountain. And they give you your eagle woman anchor and it's all fun and games with drill instructors. And then you go back and, wow. Going up this mountain, we've got the vaccine on the horizon. And we're, we're degenerating so quickly that the ones who survive the, to see the vaccine will be so profoundly affected by their own loss. Are we already so disconnected from the other surviving humans that a vaccine prevents the consequences of our physical health even matters anymore? Yeah, our own stubbornness and misinterpretation that wearing masks may irrevocably change us is the self fulfilling prophecy that will result in our irrevocable change. But what will be changed will not be our freedom. You know, it'll be ourselves. Our loved ones will be dead, our neighbors will be dead. We will be emotionally destroyed because we're, we've destroyed our own humanity first. You know, I wholeheartedly support this mask mandate. And I'm grateful that the courage exists in this council to do what it can to address this problem for the sake of our people and our guests in our town. Some people need to be reminded, while others need to be flat out told to wear pants. When our values, you know, what we consider to be truly valuable in life no longer includes the well being and the preservation of each other, we take no action. And we've lost more than our lives at that point. But this, this is what it looks like to care about each other. That. Yeah, we'll pass this mask mandate because we want Norman to survive. Because if everyone in Norman were to disappear, the town's gone. And then the parks, the lake, none of that really defines what this place is. It's, it's us, it's the people. And we need to preserve that. Thank you.
Councilmember Foreman.
I agree with a lot of what my colleagues have said. I don't think any of us like having to do this. I know that I definitely have COVID trauma almost at this point, especially being at work. Because I do work at a police department and police officers, it's the number one killer that they claim for police officers in 2020. So it is, it is exhausting, but tomorrow is Veterans Day. And today is the 245th birthday of the Marines. And recently, in a month and a half, we had 27 veterans at our Veterans Center die due to COVID related illness. I saw earlier, Lacy Lowery shared a story, a family in Okarche, three brothers in one family. Three brothers died within days of each other. So it's very real. The stats are going up, the hospitalizations are going up, the positive cases are going up, especially going into flu season and everything, people are going to be weaker. My daughter's in school, my immune system's already compromised and I have two autoimmune diseases. So it's very scary for me, but I know I still have to mask. So I think it would be doing a disservice to our veterans and to everyone who's lost a loved one to not try to extend this and try to help mitigate the effects of COVID. So I will be supporting this tonight.
Councilmember Hall.
So of all the votes that we take as members of the city council, for me personally, this is one of the easiest ones because we, the more information we get, the more we understand that masking can really make a difference. Social distancing can make a difference and washing can make a difference. And these are really simple things that we can do for one another. And, you know, we've all heard the previous heartfelt comments. And I think we're all suffering from COVID fatigue and would like to see this end sooner rather than later. But because we're not all trying to take care of one another, we find ourselves in this place. But we also have been updated again with the latest information that does show that it does make a difference, that the communities in Oklahoma that have a mask mandate and whether we enforce it 100% or whether we're out all the time looking for somebody to put their mask on, we know that it's encouraging people to put that mask on and make a difference. And we have a lot of local businesses that are trying to survive. And we have healthcare workers that are maxed out on taking care of us. And we heard tonight, not only is our hospital capacity being maxed out with residents here in Norman, but we have people from surrounding communities that are relying on our healthcare workers here to take care of them because it's the only healthcare option that they have. So to me, this is a reset. We're entering a different phase. We're entering into a winter season. We've had the luxury in a lot of ways because of mild weather to be able to be outside and do a lot of things that keep us from being inside. But now this is a new, this is a new test. And we, we have to do it for one another, whether there's a mask mandate or not. That's the only way we're going to get through it. And we have the hope of a vaccine coming on board. But we all understand that the timing of that, it's going to take some time and it's going to be continued patience. So, you know, I, I'm proud to be a part of this council that has taken these early steps early on. And I think this is reasonable. We have language to allow us to adjust if we need to as we get new information, which we are almost every day. And we definitely can revisit where we are in March. But to me, it's as simple as what we want to do to take care of one another. And wearing a mask is an easy, easy thing to do. And I heartily recommend that everybody do it. Thank you.
Councilmember Petron.
Okay, so most everybody knows that I tested positive for COVID. And I actually had to, because it made the paper, I actually had to Google to find out when that was. And it was August the 13th was when it was in the paper. And so here we are, we just learned at the council conference that the antibodies stick around for about 90 days. So here in a couple of days, that'll be my 90 days is up. And they could already be gone, who knows? But it's just interesting that we've had these mask ordinances. And by the way, it was implemented when I came, when I tested positive for COVID. And when, here we are 90 days later. And I could be getting it again, one never knows. But one thing that my doctor told me was, well, I certainly did have symptoms of COVID and had an illness. That likely that the mask reduced my viral load. So lightened how much I took in whenever I was exposed, which I don't believe I was exposed in Norman. But I was in a small rural town at the time and nobody there masked up at all. I was wearing a mask and I think that it probably helped me to have a milder case of COVID. But that's not to say that the next time around, I couldn't, I might have a completely different, you know, set of circumstances and symptoms and much more challenging. Although I will tell you it was challenging at times, it was, but it could be worse. And that is a terrifying thought. And the only reason I say this is because I feel like there's been a, I don't know, I feel like it's still treated as taboo in some ways to be diagnosed with COVID. And it's extremely contagious. So you just don't know who around you could be asymptomatic and make you sick. Or maybe you're the asymptomatic one and you make somebody else sick whom you, you love. And for me, I mean, I, I can't say it any better than the rest of the people here. This isn't fun, nobody likes wearing a mask, nobody likes. I would have never dreamed that this would be what my time on council would be about. It's 2020 has been crazy. But the decisions that we make aren't necessarily about, do we like the mask? It's, our healthcare system is overwhelmed. And I mean, we're pushing the envelope now where, while our governor won't pass a statewide mask mandate, he is flirting with putting us in a position where we have to close businesses again. Come on. If we were all as diligent as we could be about the masks, and like I say, it doesn't, they're not full, I mean, they're not 100%, but we wouldn't be staring down this gun barrel of potentially closing schools again and closing businesses again. And so to me, it's a, I mean, we don't have a choice. Our hospitals are full, they're full. They just told us there is a less than 5% capacity statewide. Our ICUs are full of COVID patients. So I'm obviously going to vote for it. Am I excited about it? No, I'm not, I'm never really excited to put that mask on either. But if it means that it protects my loved ones and if it means that it keeps businesses open and, you know, hopefully keeping our kids, you know, getting an education. Small inconvenience in my life to wear a mask. So, you know, at this point, I think we're beating a dead horse as far as trying to get people to do it that have dug their heels in and saying COVID is a hoax. Which by the way, for past election day, we have some of the worst case counts or the worst case counts in Oklahoma have been post-election. So anybody who thought that this was some sort of massive conspiracy, lay that, that one to bed because it's, didn't work out. That conspiracy is done, theory. So anyway, I don't know about the enforcement and all of that kind of thing. I mean, I think ultimately that my colleagues are right. I mean, some, some people just aren't going to wear one. So keep a big distance, that's all I can say because I don't, it can get you sick. So everybody, please take care of yourselves, hug your loved ones. I'll be voting yes.
That looks like to be the final council comments, Mayor.
I don't have all that much to add from the thoughtful comments and personal stories that have been shared by my colleagues tonight. I'm obviously ready to support this, but Councilwoman Holman mentioned wishes. You know, I wish that our governor would do his job and lead instead of beg when it comes to mask mandates. Imagine if the state would have had a mask mandate when we put one in place. How many more people would be alive? Look at the numbers we're seeing in the successful reduction of the transmission of COVID-19 with mask mandates. So I will second everyone here as well as Minority Leader Virgin and call for a statewide mask mandate. 35 other states in DC have it. This is a no brainer. And while we're at it, I mentioned earlier in the study session that millions of dollars were spent on the lawsuit against the tribes regarding the gaming compacts. It was about $1.5 million. But for some reason, we can't justify a special session to allow these meetings to continue virtually. That will help protect Councilwoman Nash's son. That will help protect every, Councilwoman Petron from contracting it a second time. That will protect my family. That will protect our staff. That will, every governing body in the state of Oklahoma is looking around, checking their wills, making sure that everything's in order. Because in order to serve my community, I now have to not only do this for $100 a month, a second full time job, but now I have to weigh the health benefits of it and really wonder if it's worth it. It shouldn't have to be this hard to do the right thing and serve your community. And the state legislature should be ashamed of themselves. It's not one month before you'll take action. Because I will be very surprised if February 1, the first thing you take up is allowing us to return to virtual meetings. It is three months in the highest numbers that we have ever seen in this state. My life is worth more than whatever you're pondering about the cost of a special session. Everyone's is. Shamed of yourselves. So with that, I'll entertain a motion. Or the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon second reading unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject emergency section two.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt emergency section two. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman. Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The emergency section is approved unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman. Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted upon final reading unanimously. Mayor Clark, before we proceed to the next item, may I have a moment?
Yes, please.
I feel like I would be remiss if I didn't bring this to your attention and I don't know why I didn't think about this earlier when we were talking about the postponement. But the I checked and I do not have a. Topic for the council conference yet on the 24th, so you could actually. If so desire, make a motion to reconsider that postponement and move the date to November the 24th and do the same thing you were going to do on the 8. That would require a motion to reconsider from somebody on the prevailing side. So I just wanted to make that publicly known to see if somebody wanted to do that.
Make that motion.
Second.
Yeah.
Fine with that.
Okay, so the motion would be to reconsider the postponement. Get back to my item, I'm sorry. And so that postponement would be to November the 24th with the same parameters and executive session at the pre-meeting.
Are there any questions from council regarding this motion?
So is it yes? I have a question.
Yes vote moves the date to November 24th.
Actually, a yes vote is a motion to reconsider and then we have to take another motion to postpone it to the 24th, I'm sorry, I didn't make that very clear. So the first, the first vote will be just a motion to reconsider the postponement.
Are there any questions from council regarding now that we have clarification, just the motion to reconsider at this time? Seeing none. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comment regarding the motion to reconsider only at this time.
Seeing none, Mayor.
Okay, are there any final comments from council regarding the motion to reconsider?
Seeing none.
Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bearman.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember Patron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The motion to reconsider the postponement on item 30 passes unanimously.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to postpone item 30 to November 24th for executive session.
Second.
Second. All right, this is an opportunity for council to ask any questions regarding moving the motion to postpone in November 24th.
Seeing none.
This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding the motion to move. The item to November 24th.
I'm seeing none, Mayor.
Okay, then this is an opportunity for council to ask or make any final comments regarding the motion to postpone to November 24th.
Seeing none.
Okay, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Motion on the floor is to postpone the item till November 24th when an executive session can be held. Councilmember Bearman.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Patron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
No.
Mayor Clark.
No.
The motion to postpone to November 24th passes by a vote of seven to two, voting against postponement, Councilmember Peacock and Mayor Clark. Thank you, Mayor.
I believe we are now on item 33 and with concurrence of council, I would like to move item 33 miscellaneous discussion ahead of executive session, so we don't have to go back in. If there are no objections, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council, limited to three minutes and address to the council as a whole.
I'm going to read a couple of comments that I've missed on the prior items that just to get them on the record, one of them. Was from Scott Martin and it. Encouraged council to, trying to find it, I'm sorry. Encouraged councils to support all three Norman Forward related projects that are on the agenda, these citizen-led and supportive quality of life initiatives are important to our community and need your support. We have seen great success in the completed Norman Forward projects, but still have more to do to fully realize all the projects as overwhelmingly approved by the voters. Thank you for your support of these items and in general, on your support for Norman's largest quality. Quality of life initiative, Norman Forward. And then the second one would be from. Mary Francis. That she sent in on the mask mandate earlier today and I neglected to read that, my apologies. I'm glad to know that Mayor Clark and council follow the science and the mask mandate is working, even though we are better than many, many other areas, we still lack enforcement and that cannot be done. One person at a time by the police, enforcement has to be done by the businesses, if a licensed business does not enforce the mask mandate, then it needs to have its license revoked. I know this proposal sounds harsh, controlling COVID-19 will simply not happen without a serious attitude that has teeth, please discuss enforcement. And that would be all.
Okay. We are, we can go ahead and do council comments at this time, but I did want to clarify something. Next, our next meeting is going to be quite long and in-person and spiking numbers because we always know that two weeks after. Especially after Halloween and election day. So I will be implementing some changes to help shorten the meetings that may seem quite severe. But we have to keep these meetings short if we have to do it in person. And so some of the things that I would like to do. Are canceling all comments that are not required by law, including ours, you all have social media and do a great job of communicating that. So I'm hopeful that we can use those methods during this three-month period. Only mission critical agenda items going forward, so we can keep our meetings as short as possible. I've been informed that some councils are just refusing to meet. Which I don't think we can do that because our public needs us to move our city forward and I am prepared to do that. But mission critical items only going forward. I would like to have besides obviously this upcoming next Thursday, no study sessions, no boards and commissions unless it's mission critical. How could we possibly ask our residents who are volunteering their time to risk their health for something that is not absolutely mission critical to the city? I know this seems again quite severe and I, it's not a decision that I would am making lightly. But I don't think we have a choice at this time. And so if you are frustrated with this, council members or the public, please contact your state legislators, please contact the governor. We're going to do everything we can to keep our residents safe and to keep our community moving forward, but we're going to have to make changes again to shorten these meetings. It sounds awkward to say, but to reduce how much we all talk, given that it is a respiratory virus and to move it along quickly. So again, I don't think we're in any type of position to just not have council meetings. And some have encouraged us to just continue virtual and let the state sue us for open meeting acts violation, which I'm not a fan of that option either. So I welcome all of your feedback on that, but. That's what I got right now, trying to again, keep everyone as safe as possible. So with that in mind, we're all going to have our comments as regular. And feel free to throw comments out then as well, let's start with Ward one, Councilmember Bearman.
Um, I didn't have a whole lot tonight, anyway, I have been feeling the effects of eight months of pandemic and feels like eight years of election season. So didn't have a whole lot to talk about, but I will say that I do think that this is the very least we can do to try and keep ourselves and our staff safe. There is a very good chance that my family will not be coming here for Christmas this year. Not because I'm not, I'm not sick, my husband's not sick, my daughter's not sick, but this state is sick. And I have family members who live in states where they are required to quarantine for two weeks after traveling to states with such high per capita case rates like Oklahoma. So I probably won't get to have family holidays this year. And I understand why, I'd feel a whole lot better about that though, if I felt like Oklahomans and Norman residents were doing everything in their power to protect everyone. But I know that's not happening either, so let's do what we can do, let's hope that the majority of the Oklahoma state legislature falls and hits their heads and learns a lesson. Maybe get some sense knocked into them to come back and help local government do what they need to do to stay safe. Because as Mayor Clark said, we are the ones responsible for the daily operations of our city. And if we all get sick and we can't operate, what happens, what happens when something happens to county commissioners? So we're all having to face this, but the state legislature gets the luxury of a very significant break. Where they don't have to worry about it, so this is going to set some things back, it's going to set some of our committees work back. But this is what, this is what we have to do, so. My hope is that everyone starts wearing a mask because we've already seen some very, very, very painful deaths in this city. And it's unfortunate that it's going to get worse, the predictions were that 1,451 Oklahomans would die by Thanksgiving. That's what was predicted back in April and May. So we're already weeks ahead of that and I don't see it getting any better. So again, like the mask mandate, I don't like it, but we have to do what we have to do in order to keep everyone as safe as we can, considering we're given so little support from higher up.
Councilmember Carter, I guess it's your turn.
Just want to quickly thank staff. And remind council about item 14 and the significance of that tonight on the consent agenda, I think it was 14. Where we funded some sidewalks that have been. Asked for by previous Ward two and Ward four council members for many years. We're going to be able to move forward on some sidewalks that are going to have a dramatic impact on child safety in getting. To and from school and I just want to. Just share the good news with council about this process because when we bid this process to these sidewalk projects out. Our staff noticed that the, there was only one, one bid and it was unusually high per unit cost and so. I want to thank city manager Pyle and his staff, Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Sturts. They, they paused, they hit a pause button, they went back, rebid the project and got three bids. Of which we had a very good bid that was well within the budgeted amount of money for these projects and so that shows our. City is making good decisions with taxpayer money, we're moving forward with vitally important infrastructure projects and all, we all know how much more walking and out and about people are doing now during COVID. And I'm looking forward to seeing these projects move forward along Berry Road, so thank you staff and thank you council for passing that ordinance.
Councilmember Patron.
Okay, first I want to acknowledge Veterans Day coming up and say how grateful I am for. All of the people who have served our great country, my favorite veteran is my husband, but I'm partial. So anyway, there are many in my life and I'm thankful for each one of you men and women who have served our great country. And the second is, oh, I don't know about you guys, but throughout this whole election process, I have really appreciated the state of Oklahoma's election system, so. As many frustrations as we may have had lately with different. Whether it's leadership or you know, just different things that we've dealt with, I can say I have been. Really impressed with our vote by mail system and just our election integrity and feeling like. Our elections are really well managed. Grateful to staff for busting their backsides with respect to the ice storm and it's really exciting to see the. City move forward and get all this mess cleaned up, appreciate you, thank you. And the Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month, appreciative of that as well, and I think that it's super important that. We continue to express our gratitude. To. Our nation's first people. And. And please fill out the survey for improving the public transit system, if you're. I believe you can get it on the city's website or I know it's floating around in all of the Facebook word pages and Twitter and all of the different. Social media platforms, but I believe it's on the website as well, so. Thanks guys, that's it.
Councilmember Hall.
I want to thank Councilmember Carter for mentioning it was agenda item number 14 on the sidewalks to schools. Projects that we approved tonight, this is something that was one of the first things that was brought to my attention as a council member when I was appointed last September. Particularly the sidewalk project that was already on a very long list of the sidewalks to schools program between. Pickard and Flood, a small little block of Cruz right across the street from McKinley Elementary School. Plus the two sidewalk projects that we also approved tonight that are on Berry Road. And these were all three projects in Ward four, but I want to thank Councilmember Carter because when we had no Ward four representation. He took on the two Berry Road projects also from constituent requests, so this is a project that we both have been working on for over a year, I really appreciate. The city manager and Mr. O'Leary for. Sticking with us and walking through the process and helping us understand how we could keep moving it through, so. This is very rewarding to see that this is how city government works and this is how we can move a project forward and I appreciate all the support from the council. For getting it moved up the list and we'll be starting construction soon and due diligence as Councilmember Carter mentioned on noting that the first. The first round really wasn't where we needed it to be and the diligence on the part of Public Works to go back and, and find us a better option, so. All of that effort of working together with city staff and with Councilmember Carter, I really do appreciate, so I'm really excited about. Three pieces of sidewalk that are definitely going to approve safety for school kids getting to school every day. As well as just for everyone else to enjoy and the next thing I wanted to point out is. Ward four is going to be home to another Norman Forward quality of life project, we've talked a lot about the development of the skate park. So Norman's first custom-built concrete skate course is completed and the Blake Baldwin Skate Park will be. Celebrating its grand opening this coming Saturday at noon and really excited to. See what it looks like finally completed and all of the other things that came along with it for Andrews Park, so. Happy to have another Norman Forward project ready to go and hope that the rest of the community can really enjoy it. I also wanted to point out that this coming Friday is Second Friday Art Walk. Um, I also wanted to point out that this coming Friday is Second Friday Art Walk. Which we haven't been able to have in person for months now. Yet, the Norman Arts Council and some very loyal sponsors for the art walk. And some very creative people that can shift back and forth between the virtual world and the in-person world. Art Walk has gone on. Every single month with a lot of creative input from people who work hard to um. Give us something to look forward to and to celebrate and to marvel at the creative talents that we have in our town. So I hope you can participate virtually. It'll be broadcast on the Facebook page on Friday night, starting at six PM with lots of different artistic contributors. And it's uh, personally, one of my favorite things that we do in Norman. And I appreciate so much the contributions of our arts community to provide us with distraction and creativity. And humor and beauty and all of the things that you can find in art. So um, definitely appreciate them working under very adverse circumstances to keep the idea of our Second Friday Art Walks alive for Norman. Then the final thing I wanted to say too was again, getting back to the mask ordinance, that this is. Really a gift that we can give to one another and something that we can do for each other. And um, you know, we've mentioned a lot of different groups of people. And we've also mentioned the dilemma that we all find ourselves in now by being forced back into public meetings, in-person meetings. And I want all of us to consider the risk that our city staff puts themselves through every single day. Because the city of Norman has been open for business for months now. And so whenever we meet, that means a lot of city staff has to meet with us. And um, they are put in harms way during regular business hours. Now we're going to be putting them in harms way for long meetings. And um, I certainly understand where Mayor Clark is coming from, that we're going to have to make some hard choices. And um, again, we need to take all the precautions necessary to protect one another. And to provide an environment for our city staff to continue doing all the work that they do. And we've seen that demonstrated in really big ways in the last couple of weeks, recovering from an ice storm. And I think Norman has been out in front on our own city staff, making roads passable. And our fire and police departments trying to keep a safe environment for all of us. And um, our ability to get contractors on board. I mean, we, we started yesterday and I know everyone's impatient to get all of their debris picked up and it's going to take a little bit of time. But um, we've got it going and again, I want to thank city staff who many of them didn't have power, just like the rest of us. And still showed up to work every day and got the job done. So um, it's just another reason why um, we want to mask up. For one another and to take care of our city staff so we can keep running the place. Thank you all.
All right, Councilmember Nash.
Yeah, I've just got one thing. Uh, this, the fifth annual Lake Thunderbird Workshop and Cleanup Event has been rescheduled. It has been rescheduled for this Sunday. Uh, it's going to be at uh, at the end of Alameda. And from one o'clock to four o'clock PM. Going to learn about the watershed, going to pick up some trash and spend some time outdoors. It's going to be a hoop. Thank you.
Councilmember Foreman.
I just want to acknowledge again that tomorrow is Veterans Day and I'm the daughter of a veteran. Granddaughter of two veterans. My best friend is a gold star widow. Um, and so I understand the sacrifices that families make and the, the service that they have. And thank you to Councilmember Nash for your service to our country. I appreciate that. Um, Mayor Clark, I appreciate you wanting to um, not have study sessions and try to mitigate the risk of. The public and city staff and us as much as possible. Do you mind if I ask you, I have a couple clarifying questions that the public has asked me. Do you mind if I just ask really fast? I know it's like comment.
I may not have all the answers, but yes.
Okay, so next week was, is a study session or should be in our first meeting and so we won't be having a meeting?
No, that one, it was already scheduled. So that one will happen, yes. Sorry, I should have clarified that. So basically after the twenty-fourth.
Okay, and then the other question was. Since we're not, council's not going to have comments, are we going to have non-consent items, only just going to be a consent docket?
No, we could still have non-consent items, but, and those are comments that are required by law and Madam Clerk, please jump in if I'm wrong. But things like miscellaneous discussion at the end are not required by law. So that's what I'm referring to. So yes, for anything that we are voting on that is mission critical, everyone will still have the right to comment going forward.
And the public on that also.
That's, yeah, I believe required by law, so yes.
Okay.
Public hearings, public hearings and zoning items. Are also a public hearing when you adopt a zoning ordinance, so those will all have public comment.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
Hey, just a couple of things. I want to also remind folks about the grand opening of the skate park on Saturday. If you can come, it is outdoors, but definitely bring your mask and spread out. It's a wonderful facility. It's probably, the library was very exciting, uh, for sure. It's the biggest, most expensive. But this is the one I've actually probably been the most excited about getting done. I have lots of friends that skate. I used to skate, uh, inline skates a lot when I was younger. And uh, so getting this type of in-ground facility is a really big deal for us. And um, it will help attract, when the time is appropriate, attract people to Norman because of it, I think. To use and as a tourist attraction, all sorts of stuff. But I appreciate also being mentioned that it's not just a skate park. There were several other improvements made to Andrews Park through this as well. And so I encourage everybody to come check it out and see what we've done. And the promises that we have followed through with in regard to these projects. Transit Survey definitely want to remind everybody to get on there and take that. We are trying to make our system more efficient and serve our public better. And we need um, the public's help in identifying deficiencies, uh, common suggestions, anything that might be out there that can help us build a better system. We definitely need your input, so please get on there and fill that out for us. Tree limb removal, as Councilmember Hall and others have mentioned, we're beginning the cleanup process right now. There's a lot of it. Um, all over the whole city, certainly certain parts of the central part, uh, city have maybe some more debris. Just because we have a whole lot more trees that are bigger and older perhaps, but uh. There is a lot of damage just everywhere throughout the city in general. So if you do have any questions, I have had questions from a gated condo community in Ward seven that, you know, pays city utilities. But uh, wasn't sure if they'd be able to get their stuff picked up as far as the tree limbs and stuff. If you have any questions like that, please email your council member, if it's me, wardseven@normanok.gov. And we'll make sure that we can get some detailed answers for you from staff about what we can do, what we can't do and why as well. So send those in. Another one I want to get to let people know about is. Working on trying to clean this up and restore services and things like that. But we all are very well aware of the destruction of the trees, many of which we care greatly about. They add value to our properties, they add their quality of life amenity. For many people, it's the main, one of the very main reasons I enjoy living in this part of town. And so I think once we get things cleaned up, get, get our feet under us here, we can start having, and we have a forester on staff, as maybe some don't know what we do. We are going to be working on how we can go about, you know, fixing the damage, replacing trees that have been lost, that have had to be cut down. That type of stuff. So that is on, I think, many of our radars and we'll continue working on that as we go forward. For those of those that are concerned about our, our healthy tree canopy in such a norman. So um, outside of that, comes to elections, I'm just excited that so many Norman residents decided to go out and exercise that right last Tuesday. We mentioned Veterans Day and people that have, have, you know, given their life, given their time, sacrificed their family, all sorts of things. To allow this country to have the free and fair elections that we do have. And so um, I appreciate all the Norman folks that went out again and exercised that. It was a pretty good turnout. Many of, many of us have seen uh, how the precincts in Norman voted. It's very interesting. Uh, when you look at the county map and the state map and, you know, you look at the whole state and it's just red. But if you start looking at all the individual counties and the precincts in those counties, it's, it's a little bit more diverse than people would think. So anyway, uh, we've got a lot of work to do. It's going to be a lot harder to get it done if we aren't able to have committee meetings and study sessions and things like that. But I definitely would agree with the mayor that um, if uh. You know, if we can't do virtual meetings, we really do have to reduce the amount of interaction that we're having, not only with each other, but uh, our staff. I think that's a really good point, that our staff has to go work every day at City Hall. And um, they are essential as they get uh, when it comes to keeping the functions of the city going. So um, I think that's a very good point and fortunately it, it will impact our ability to get things that we've set on our roadmap done in a timely manner. Um, but that is just the circumstances we have found ourselves in until our state government um, does something. So anyway, thank you all. We'll see you next time.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yeah, so I agree with everything that's been said in regards to virtual meetings and their necessity at this point. It's not even a one, it's much, it's very much a necessity. Uh, I also, you know, I just want to quickly acknowledge staff, uh, city staff and our utility companies for their work in the cleanup and getting everybody's power restored. And multiple of us have said it tonight, but I think you guys definitely deserve multiple people saying it because you've got an outstanding job, so. I'll also plug the transit study, so everyone, you know, please get engaged in that issue and give us your feedback. That's all I got.
All right, well, I want to say thank you to the Veterans Day Committee and Parks and Recreation for a lovely Veterans Day ceremony. It was a little windy, but at least it was a rainy. Had some rainy ones of those before. The speakers were great and like Councilmember Foreman, as the daughter of a veteran, it's always very special to me. And the theme was about how families are the heart of the soldiers. So I really appreciated that. And again, it was very well done. Speaking of, of supporting others in our community, I am actually hosting a stuffed animal drive for the Mary Abbott House. If you don't know what that nonprofit is, there's a wonderful nonprofit that works in conjunction with the police department and the Cleveland County Sheriff's. And they deal with children who suffered some form of abuse that have to come give official statements and things like that. And it's a very scary experience. And so every child who has to visit the Mary Abbott House gets to leave with a stuffed animal for being brave, that they get to pick for themselves. It's brand new. And they are running incredibly low because unfortunately. Our Norman children and in the region are suffering unprecedented amounts of child abuse. And so their numbers have been very, very high. So we have collection boxes at City Hall and I'm also happy to do a porch pickup. And we'll be collecting those through the twentieth and I will be dropping them off to the Mary Abbott House on the twenty-third. So I would appreciate your participation in that. And then some other good news, it's always good to share good news. Some of you may be aware that I was one of forty mayors selected nationally to participate in the Bloomberg Harvard US Cities Recovery Leadership Initiative. And we had the opportunity to apply for the Bloomberg Harvard City Leadership Initiative's Innovation Track. Which provides free training and free guidance to a leadership team within the city of Norman. And we are one of twelve cities in the nation to be selected for that. And so City Manager Pyle has worked very hard to put together an amazing team of staff. And we're going to get to work on some of the many issues facing our community, but with a team of Harvard brains behind us. They are the Center for Public Impact, so with the many issues facing our community right now, I am so excited to have this extra support system. Again, at no cost to the city of Norman, so very excited about that. And last thing I will say about the elections, thank you all for voting. This is just beginning of election season in Norman. We know that we have council elections in February, but because it's an odd year, we're able to have more elections generally and we've got a lot to vote on. So uh, do your, your voting exercises regularly. We are going to be voting a bit in 2021. And I hope the passion that we've seen from national elections continues with local elections. Because this is where I think the real change happens, where you feel it in your everyday life. And to those who are brave enough to put their names on a ballot, win or lose, thank you. Because that's what makes our democracy great and it is a big commitment from the candidate, but also from the candidate's family. So congratulations to everyone who ran, win or lose. So with that, this takes us back up to item thirty-two, which is actually going to take us to an executive session to discuss pending litigation. In the case of Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number One Twenty-Two, versus the city of Norman, case number CB twenty-two-six-six-one. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn out of the city council meeting and convene into an executive session in order to discuss pending litigation. Motion. Thank you. The motion, the motion on the floor is to adjourn out of the city council meeting and convene into an executive session in order to discuss pending litigation. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember Petron.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall. Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Nash.
Aye.
Councilmember Foreman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Peacock.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, so.
Give us a minute here to.
While they're adjusting everyone, let's take a much-needed break. I kind of got worked up earlier and skipped right past that. So it's nine fifty, nine fifty-five. Let's re-meet back in here. And again, this will be executive session, so please make sure there is no one else in the room with you. And I will see you in five.